We'll call the October sixteenth city council meeting in order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer, pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
Most gracious of Almighty God our Father, we come once again thankful for the many blessings bestowed upon us. Thank you, my Father, for allowing us to be able to survive through the hurricane. And we pray for those that was affected by the hurricane, that they will be able to recover. And we ask for God to contend, give us without the strength that we need in order to be servants of this city. In this we pray in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Fact of the day, on October eighteenth nineteen seventy-seven, in the sixth game of the World Series against the Los Angeles Dodgers, New York Yankees outfielder Reggie Jackson, his three home runs in a row offered three consecutive pitches from three different pitchers. Only the Great Babe Ruth had ever hit three homers in a single World Series game. And he did it twice, once in nineteen twenty-six and once in nineteen twenty-eight. But he didn't do it on consecutive pitches, even consecutive at-bats. Jackson's amazing homerun streak helped the Yankees win the game and the series, the team's first since nineteen sixty-two.
They're winning. You know, they're winning.
All right, we're gonna skip the rules of the court. We're gonna go right to approval of minutes, we're gonna try to get some folks out of this, out of the room here as quick as we can, so. Uh, look for a motion to the minutes as, as written?
Initially, I was going to table them, but then I spoke to our attorneys, so I'm, I'm gonna approve the minutes as is.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? Behind, all opposed, motion unanimously, anything on the agenda needs to be moved around, Jacob?
Yes, we actually were advertising ordinance number three thousand seventy-six and three thousand seventy-seven, which is the INB homes. Uh, that didn't get through planning commission, so we won't be hearing that tonight.
Which, which one now, I'm sorry?
It, it's not actually in our agenda, but it was advertised, um, all of the adjoining properties received a letter saying that we would be hearing it tonight, but we're not going to be, because it didn't get through planning commission yet.
Okay, so we're gonna just jump, if you don't mind, we're gonna go ahead and jump to the presentation, we got a big group here, we'd like to, we can get them in and out. So Stephen Krib, why don't you come forward and, uh, give us the update on the Apopka Youth Council class of twenty-four, twenty-five?
All right, thank you, Mayor, uh, Commissioners, uh, once again, my name is Stephen Krib, I'm a special project specialist here with the city of Apopka. And behind me stands the class of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Apopka Youth Council, they just had their first meeting. And it is a really excited, uh, bunch, they've already thrown a lot of great ideas out there, we're really excited, uh, for the coming year. Um, again, just want to thank the, uh, Commissioners and Mayor for your support of the Apopka Youth Council program. Uh, last year, we were able to do, uh, many things through different events and initiatives, uh, with the city that meant a lot. We're looking forward to doing a lot more, uh, this year, we have a lot more, uh, youth, a lot more hands to help out, so we're really, really looking forward to it. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and let each one of them come up and introduce themselves. And, uh, just before I do that, real quick note, we did already, despite this past, or despite today being our first meeting, the Florida League of Cities Youth Summit was originally scheduled for this past Saturday. And already, we had about nine of our youth that, before we even had our first meeting, were really ready to volunteer and, and go to that meeting. Unfortunately, it got canceled due to Hurricane Milton, and so I will keep you all updated on, on when that gets rescheduled. But I'm gonna let them come up one at a time now and, uh, and introduce themselves.
My name is Matthew Touche, and I'm a senior, and I go to Apopka High School.
Uh, my name's Andreas Mayer, I go to Forest League Academy, and I am a junior.
My name is August Rice, um, I'm a junior at Apopka High School, and I join the Apopka Youth Council because I think the youth being involved in politics is such an important thing in our community, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sophia Powell, and I'm a junior at Apopka High School.
Hi, my name's Hunter Yarborough, I'm a senior at Dr. Phillips High, and I join the Youth Council to get off the couch and do something.
Hello, I'm Brock Shapiro, I'm a junior at Apopka High School.
Hello, my name is Noel Francis, and I'm a senior at Apopka High School.
Hello, my name is Olivia Hodge, I'm a senior at Apopka High School, and I join the Apopka Youth Council to become an advocate for the homelessness within our community.
Hi, I'm Arissa Moniz, and I'm a senior at Apopka High School.
Hello, my name is Kenda Walker, and I'm a junior at Apopka High School.
Hello, my name is Richard Shaw, and I am a senior at Apopka High School. I joined the Apopka Youth Council because I wanted to get involved in my community and make an impact, thank you.
Hello, my name is Isabella Fernandez, and I'm a senior at FLI.
Hello, my name is Ava Misa, I'm a junior at Central Florida Prep.
Can I, can I just, I also, you know, I, we started the Apopka High School Key Club, and I have some of the students that are in the council that are in the key club, and I just want to say thank you so much, because that's, that's volunteering, so they're actually not just going to school and being part of the community with the key club, they're also part of the Apopka Youth Council, so I'm excited for them, so congratulations to each and every one of you.
Absolutely, Commissioner Velasquez, and, and thank you for that, and again, that is, uh, one of the reasons why we have so many more of them, uh, this year is we certainly realized how, uh, busy our youth are and, and like to stay, so we have, we have more hands to, to help out with that this year. So thank you so much, do you have any questions about the, the council this year?
Nick, they helped you out with all your cleanups.
Yes, I've had, which I appreciate, and I'm gonna continue to do more cleanups, and what, what I love, so when I was in high school, a year or two ago, uh, I had, uh, actually started the Youth Advisory Board, it was, we called it YAB, back in the day at Apopka High School, so it's very cool to see this continue on, and I love that, every, many of you had said that you want to get involved in civics and help out with homelessness and things like that, and so please engage with the council however you can to get involved and let us know how we can help in whatever initiatives you guys are doing, we want to get involved in it and help you guys be successful, so thank you for being a part of this, and, and welcome.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, look forward to some great things this year from y'all. Okay, we're gonna go back and we'll pick up the, uh, we got a couple of proclamations, I'm gonna go ahead.
Do you want to take a quick picture with them?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes. Okay, I'm sorry, oh, yeah. Okay, next up, we've got two proclamations, um, we've got, we've got our folks from Orlando Health here, and, uh, so I'm gonna go ahead and, we'll do that one. The air care team is here, uh, you know, we've been up and running for a year now, we're excited, um, how many? Well, we'll ask, maybe have somebody come up and just give us kind of the details for at least our Apopka, um, facility that you guys, uh, have, have been operating here in Apopka. Okay, and what it, what it says is, whereas Orlando Health's air care team is Central Florida's only airborne emergency transport unit that provides life-saving care to the pediatric and adult population, and where it's first established on October thirteenth nineteen eighty-four with a single aircraft program located on the downtown Orlando campus, the air care team has grown to four aircraft programs strategically positioned around the region servicing more than fifteen counties. And whereas the air care team ensures safety is its top priority, and has flown over two million accident-free miles, with their team having an average of twenty years of experience. And whereas when every second counts, the air care team provides advanced medical and critical care bedside, on scene, or in-flight, and has transported over forty-five thousand patients. And whereas the air care team consists of over ninety-eighteen members, nurses, paramedics, pilots, mechanics, emergency medical technicians, and communication specialists ensuring services are available when called upon. And whereas Orlando Health opened the Air Care Three Apopka Base on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at twenty-seven twenty, West Orange Avenue, Apopka, Florida. And whereas Orlando Health Air Care Three Apopka has been instrumental in serving the city of Apopka and the surrounding communities. And whereas this year on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the air care team is celebrating their fortieth anniversary of servicing the Central Florida region. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim and honor the Orlando Health Air Care Team for its fortieth anniversary, so thank you.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, thank you everybody for having us tonight, we just wanted to say thank you, uh, for the recognition, um, we're very happy to, here, uh, very happy to be here, um, and to be, uh, representing the community, uh, and to be ready for you guys at any moment's notice to get out there and, um, uh, help save a life.
That's awesome, well, we thank you for what you do, and we can grab a picture with you as well.
Sure.
Okay, next up, we have Mobility Week two thousand twenty-four. We have been a proud supporter of their activities here.
Mr. Mayor, are you able to take the proclamation or take a picture with them, that proclamation that you just read for?
Sure.
Oh, I'm, yeah, we can.
Sorry. Yeah, 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 y'all. Okay, the proclamation reads, whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative effort by the Florida Department of Transportation and its partner agencies to promote awareness of safe multimodal transportation choices by hosting an annual collection of outreach events. And whereas Mobility Week is an ideal time for counties, cities and transportation agencies to highlight achievements, introduce new initiatives, and/or implement new policies promoting sustainable transportation. And whereas Mobility Week is an opportunity for individuals to explore various transportation choices available and consider how multimodal transportation reduces traffic congestion, benefits the environment, improves community health. And whereas Mobility Week is consistent with the City of Apopka's key priorities of pedestrian safety and healthy transportation options. And whereas the City of Apopka supports Mobility Week by hosting and participating in bicycle, in transportation events such as the Apopka Wildlife Drive Eco Tourism Bike Ride. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty-fifth through November second, two thousand twenty-four, as Mobility Week two thousand twenty-four. So, anybody hear from, okay, awesome.
Good evening, thank you so much, my name is Libertad Acosta Anderson, and I'm the Passenger Operations Manager for the Department of Transportation District Five. And I want to thank you so much for your support, for many years you have been supporting us with, and we've been doing that eco ride, that has been such fun. So thank you so much for your support.
Yes, we have, we had a good time, I, I know that Commissioner Smith and I have done it a couple of times, and, uh, we just know that this year, we are definitely gonna bring mosquito repellent, because the mosquitoes were about to, to drag us off last time, but. So anybody's got a, a chance, come on out and be a part of that, we're gonna, it's a four-mile ride around, um, Lake Apopka, so it's a piece of the, the wildlife trail, but it's a good, it's, it'll be a, it's a fun time to, to get out there and see some nature and get on your bike, so.
We'll have to keep getting shake to follow you, it's your fast way.
All right, we'll get a, we'll get a picture with you, anybody else from your team? Bradley Williams, come on down.
Bradley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm here, uh, this evening with, uh, members of the Orange Audubon Society to give an update on the Apopka Birding Park and the progress they've made since the ground lease. Just a quick recap of, of how we got here, um, back in twenty eighteen, uh, the, the property formerly known as the Hickerson Property was conveyed to the city by the St. John's River Water Management District in return for a five-acre city-owned parcel, uh, which was later conveyed on, uh, back in twenty nineteen. Uh, June seventh, twenty seventeen, the city established a, um, memorandum of understanding between, uh, the city and Orange Audubon Society to provide some education out to the Lake Apopka North Shore. Then again, in, uh, twenty twenty-two, another MOU was established between the city and Orange Audubon Society, developed the property formerly known as Hickerson Property into a birding park. And then earlier this year, in March of twenty twenty-four, a ground lease was finalized with Orange Audubon Society. And since that date, uh, Orange Audubon, what you'll see here very shortly, has been working hard on, uh, developing some renovation plans of the old truck shop that's on the property, uh, to develop that educational center. So this time, I'll go ahead and introduce Deborah Green, the President of the Orange Audubon Society, to run through some updates from her.
Thank you, Radley, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So, um, I gotta head a little bit, um, the Apopka Birding Park, um, is the sixty-nine point five acres that were deeded by the St. John's River Water Management District to the city for a birding park in conjunction with our organization then back in two thousand eighteen. And I don't have a way to point, but you see the arrow, that's the entrance to it, which is right at the entrance to the Lake Apopka Wildlife Drive. Is that a pointer? Oh, cool. Okay, um, and just to orient you, if you're not real familiar, um, this is the Wildlife Drive, uh, it's only open Friday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, seven to, uh, three, and then you have to be off by five. So it, for people who don't know the hours or want to come during the week, there is a pedestrian gate, you can walk in or ride your bike in. Um, and just to the right of it is the entrance to the Apopka Birding Park. An old nursery site, during the Magnolia Park renovation, the City of Apopka opened this parking lot. And this is Orange Audubon's leased area, it starts at this gate, go down this paved road, which was part of the old nursery. Here's the old building to be renovated, um, and it was a truck shop where the, uh, nurserymen would let, um, the farmers fix their trucks. It's a sturdy cement block building, and we determined it would be better to renovate it than try to start anew, it's more ecological to renovate. And then there's a second gate, and then there's sixty-plus more acres of old nursery site to restore. Um, and it's upland, that's why it was taken out of the Wildlife Drive, excuse me, out of the North Shore property, and donated to the city because it isn't part of the restoration. And upland areas are rare there, um, and they're important for habitat for sparrows and other wintering birds that birders love to see, and that need habitat to survive. But the site was covered with greenhouses, and they burned in nineteen ninety-nine after the district purchased it. Um, but the concrete pads remain, and that's a major obstacle to our restoring it. Fortunately, um, the St. John's River Water Management District does need the concrete for riprap for construction projects, and they are going to take it out, I, I trust most of it, and it will take a while, and it's gonna be a lot of disturbance and everything, but at least that is planned, and we're very pleased about that. Another big obstacle is the Coga grass, one of the most invasive, um, weeds in the world. And the city is working, uh, out there with us to treat twice a year, and we're also trying to get an FWC grant to help with that. Um, and we're getting professional consultation on the restoration, and before, and, and we, I know different people have offered to have volunteers out there, all, all you young people, this would be great to have you all involved in it. Um, but so far, we gotta get rid of the concrete pads and a few more steps, and we do need water. Um, so we're looking forward to that water hook getting hooked up. But the birders are already looking around out there, there are birds out there, so they're doing monthly bird surveys. And it's just a great location at the entrance to the Wildlife Drive, facing the woods to the east and the west, and the canal to the south. And that building, I used to brag about how that building, uh, stood through Hurricane Irma and then Hurricane Ian, and it just was so strong and sturdy, but unfortunately, oh, but one more, a couple more slides, this is our, some of our board members brainstorming what we wanted to do with the building. And, uh, the second one on the left is, uh, Alan Shapiro, a fine, a former nurseryman, he had the idea of making an annex, which you'll see in a minute, what, how that, we're gonna use that. And here we are down at our architect's offices doing some visioning. And here is our lead architect, Philip Donovan of Little, that will speak in just a minute and show you his designs. But I, I'm sad to say that Hurricane Milton really did a number on it, and, including the roof. So this is reason to move more quickly if you, the city will, and getting us the electricity and the, that infrastructure. Okay, well, thank you so much, and I'll turn it over to our architect.
Uh, good evening, thank you for having us, so let's jump right into the design, and we'll start with the big shot of the entry here. So you saw what it was before, and you can start to envision what it is going to be. Um, we believe that the ethos of this client is that the building needs to serve the restoration project of the site. So we need to, we do, it needs to reduce its use of resources, it needs to add to the value of the systems, the living systems on site. And so that's been our, our goal and our work over the last several months in getting to, um, where we are today, which we'll talk about in a minute. And we had several guiding principles, one amazing quote by John Muir here, when one tugs at a single thing in nature, he finds it attached to the rest of the universe. So something as ecologically rich as the, uh, Wildlife Drive and the surrounding ecosystems of that, um, create such a vibrant place to create this environmental center. And these were the words that bubbled up from the client as we started to lead them into the design effort, restorative, education, bird-centered, of course, and sustainable, um, so these were our guiding principles as we embarked on the design. So Deborah spoke about the existing additions, if everybody's pretty familiar here, I'm sure, the yellow arrows pointing globally at the, the site where we are. Lake Apopka was the second largest lake in Florida at one point until we diked it and started to drain the land, and we've been in restoring it now. And the Wildlife Drive is an amazing example of that. And so as we zoom in on the site and the building, there, you can see Lust Road and the Wildlife Drive on the south part of that, um, that image. And there, the big red box is the building that's there today. So it is one acre that we're developing around the building and to aid in the restorative efforts and the education of those efforts to the visitors. So the Apopka Wildlife Drive gets hundreds of thousands of cars every year, and this is right on the right, as Deborah said. And so it's this amazing experience to educate people about our natural systems in this area and how ecologically rich it is. So existing additions, before the hurricane hit, it was, um, a tin roof and wood trusses and a very, very sturdy CMU block building with concrete piers. That's why we felt that, we did, we even ran the cost analysis, but reusing this lowers our carbon footprint and lowers our costs and our resources and makes us better stewards of the environment. Um, so we went through a conceptual process, we didn't just say, hey, here's the design, we studied massing, and how do we wrap this building with a new roof, how do we put an education center in something that was once a very industrial, um, building? And we didn't just study it from sketching and what looks good, we also studied, we modeled the energy use of it and the water use of the site, and trying to optimize and reduce those, and then we ranked them. So we went through this exercise with the, uh, the client, and you can see there's very different iterations of design concepts here. This one bubbled to the top, it's called the bird wing, um, sometimes that's called a butterfly roof. And the idea was to drape a roof that collected water and energy from the sun over this existing building and use that for educational purposes. That one bubbled to the top and we moved it forward, and so what you're looking at here, I think is, yeah. So what you're seeing in, in the gray. yeah. So what you're seeing in, in the gray is the existing shell, the footprint of that building, and we're infilling it and we're adding an annex on the east side. So it's a big exhibit space for education, some restrooms, and then an observatory room. That's a big part of it, is to look east into a restored habitat and start to see the species of birds that move across this site. And then things like the blue square here is rainwater sister and collection. And then the roof, again, a solar array. This building is meant to be zero energy. So over the course of 12 months, it will produce all the energy it needs. And we're also collecting water to flush toilets. So we will collect and so we're significantly reducing our use operationally of resources long-term. So just some of the building elevations, it'll be a mix of stucco and fiber cement siding. It'll be a metal canopy roof, again evocative of a bird wing as you enter the building. What you're looking at in the light blue are the original openings of the garage doors, and we're going to let a lot of natural light into the space, and then the annex here and the rainwater collection. So we want this building to educate on its own as well. And then the east side with the windows for viewing birds, the south and the west sides as well, and then some of the rendering. So this was the initial pass at what the building could be, and we've gone through an iterative process of costing and evaluating the complexity of this and started to develop a more refined approach to the building. So you can see the existing shell there as the box with the annex on the left and the bird wing roof. And then some of the interior themes, I'll just hit on very quickly, this idea that we are part of a much larger water system here. And these are all photographs from the site, but how do we tell that story, not just in signage in the building, but in graphics on the floor and the way that the space is expressed on the interior? And so you can see an image if you're standing on the southern end of the building, looking back towards the front, classroom space, exhibit space, flexible meeting space, and then a picture in that observatory room looking east. So big windows and a lot of information on, on what you would see out there. And so this is sort of a side-by-side comparison, standing in the space now on the left and what it, that same spot standing in the new space conceptualized in a rendering on the right. And then very quickly, I'll just hit on this. We have a great landscape architect, but this one acre site is also supposed to educate people about natives in Florida. Deborah spoke about the Cogan grass. We have a lot of invasives that people plant in their yards that are beautiful, but they're not native, and they, they tend to diminish our ecosystem. So this is a natural landscape that deals, it's pollinators, it's birds, it's healthy and vibrant for all systems of life around it. And as you visit it, you'd come in here to the education building and then explore the park at large. So, thank you.
Any questions for the team from Audubon or for Radley?
No, this is the second time I've seen this because I actually went to the Orlando Center and actually saw the whole tour.
Yeah, it's going to be very impressive. I appreciate you all being here to update us on this, and it's going to be a huge value add for our community and also for the environment. So appreciate it. Thanks for teaming up with us. And I guess it's on us, do we have a timeline of like what utilities to the site look like? So we're working, we're working with Duke. Obviously, I've had some delays there with the recent weather to get water, power on. We're working to get water established to the site. As you can tell, the Orange Audubon Society has been working hard on their side to get a concept design and a layout plan. So they're going to be moving forward with construction documents, I'm sure, and then going through the building permit process. We want to take an opportunity tonight, though, to bring it forward to the council to take a look at and see the progress. And we'll be working hard on our side to get them utilities hooked up and needed.
And we're also working with St. John's Water Management. They have a porto potty down just inside the fence that we're going to try to put a bathroom at our parking lot and a, and a bridge over the ditch or the canal so that people can get right from our parking lot right inside the gate, you know, when it, when it's closed. You can, you can go on the North Shore, you just can't take a car on the North Shore during the non-holidays and weekends. So we want to try to give everybody an opportunity. So I think St. John's going to work with us on helping us with some, some, some financial aid to get a bathroom and the, the bridge over the canal.
Right. So and we're, that's an overall site plan of that initial parking lot, which is still under our purview. So we're working on that. Maybe some improvements there, the restroom facility there. And we're also, we're just waiting on an installed able. We've got a new front gate coming in for the front of the property as well, so.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, Philip Donovan with Little Diversified Architectural Consulting. So we're based in, in Orlando. And to answer your question, we hope that this building, it's anticipated to be open just after the Fourth of July holiday of next year. So we're wrapping up construction documents the beginning of next month, and then we'll move into permitting and then into construction. So it's moving right along, and it should be a great holiday celebration in the summer next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Thank you, Radley.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got three consent agenda items. Anybody need to have any of those pulled? If not, look for motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Next up, business side of Emerson Park Development, Blanche Sherman.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. This evening, I want to give you an overview of the Emerson Park subdivision roadway request for conversion of their private roads to public ownership. Sequence of past events, on June 5th, the city's Public Service Director, Dio Dat Budha, boo hoo, I'm sorry Dio for saying your name wrong, presented Emerson Park subdivision request to have their roadways, curbs, and streets signs transferred from private to public ownership and to create an MSBU as a funding source to bring the roads up to city standard. At that June 5th meeting, City Council requested City Attorney Clifford Shepherd to gather information to determine if it is legally possible to propose an assessment on the property not owned by the city. On August 25th to 2024, the city attorney presented an outline to City Council, providing the general steps to impose a special assessment. On August 21st, after several discussions pertaining to the estimated cost of the project, debt and financial obligations, process of selecting a lender, and impact of the city's debt capacity, staff was requested to come back with an updated cost estimate, a methodology or process to move this forward and to look at the potential financing options. This is a follow-up from that meeting. In regards to the confirmation of the updated costs, per Michael Ortiz, the cost estimate of 3.8 is correct if the project does not start before September 2025, because that's when a contract expires. If the project commits before September 2025, the cost can be around 2.5. Based on the amount of funds that I've heard that Emerson Park is willing to contribute, we're looking at approximately a million-dollar gap there. The methodology or process to move this forward, what I have in your package is a critical event schedule that was prepared by our bond council and a draft resolution. In regards to the potential financing options, we would need that final assessment resolution approved prior to moving forward with a loan for the RFP. If you look on your critical event schedule, you can see that those are items, I think, number 23 and 24. So that will probably be, if we follow this schedule, around February 20th, before we can issue an RFP for that. There are certain events that have to take place in order to do this. So, questions?
Any questions for Blanche?
I've got a few questions. The, if you can go back to the, yeah, right there. Perfect. Thank you. You had said there's approximately a million-dollar difference from what the HWA is willing to provide versus, can you just detail that?
I'll detail that out for you. Based, based on the 3.7, if they give 600,000, that's about 3.1. If, if this occurs after September 2025, that's been clarified, you know, within the past week. Now, if the project begins prior to then, you got 2.5. That's why I'm saying, so you're about 1.9 million. So that's why I'm saying that one, about a million-dollar gap between the 2.1 and 3.1.
Okay, so if we just, if we don't do this by September, it increases our cost by one point?
Based on the contract.
Two, five, nine million.
Yeah, because the contract pricing expires on September 20th, 2025.
And what was the total, and I know it's asked this, I think at every single meeting, do you know the total amount of homeowners in that community?
504, based on the presentation that was presented.
And then the terms, and this may be getting way too far ahead of myself here, the terms of financing and debt obligation, would it be a 20-year?
That's, again, when we issued a RFP, we can see what's most, I have.
If I'm going ahead, I, we can.
No, you're fine. I have our financial advisor here.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening. Joel Tindell with Hilltop Securities. I always serve as, serve as the city's financial advisor. Like Blanche said, we won't really know until the RFP goes out and we get responses back. Obviously, we can come up with estimates in advance, but you ultimately are not going to know what a bank's going to propose. So there's fewer lenders from a bank standpoint that will go out a full 20 years. So that universe is more limited. I think the scenario, the potential scenario would be potentially asking for 15 and 20. But again, until responses come back, obviously, market conditions are changing quite a bit. So six months plus into the future is kind of an unknown on that.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Just trying to build expectations of what this looks like overall. I mean, just the difference alone by waiting, not saying we're absolutely doing this, but if we were to do this and wait until after September, it's an increase of $2,500 per homeowner then, and that's substantial. So.
Over a period of time.
Correct, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's about $200 per year more. And so it would be in the form of an MSBU, which goes on the tax bill, correct?
Yeah, special assessment, yeah. It goes on tax.
Similar to how we do trash assessments, it's non-adverum.
Non-adverum, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, that's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Because this is a mixed community, because some of them are townhomes, correct? Yes. So that means the assessment is not going to be the same for each one. Am I correct?
By owner. Not by the individuals in the townhomes, right?
That is, that is correct. Part of when you, when you go through the assessment, one of the, one of the parts of the process is determining who will be assessed what based on the benefit proportional. So my presumption, I can't prejudge, it's like I told you, you can't grade the exam before you're taking it. But the people who are doing that assessment for you and coming up with the numbers are supposed to take into account the benefit versus the size of the property. And so I would project, but don't know, that townhomes would have a smaller assessment than single-family homes. But that's yet to be determined.
And Commissioner Smith, if you notice, in one of the critical events, what they recommended is that we, we come up with a methodology consultant. So all of that would be factored in at that time.
So this time, do we know how many townhomes there are, it's supposed to, how many single-family homes?
No, I do not. I just know it was 504 units presented to you before. 50172?
And 170 townhomes.
500 homeowners, and then she said 172 townhomes.
So wait a minute, say that again? Oh, okay, that's what I was saying, yeah.
Oh, okay, because it sounded like it was a plus.
It did. It did.
All right, then my, my next question is, you said they have approximately a million dollars available they would be contributing?
No, no, they, they, what I've said is my understanding that at the time when they first came, they had about 1.5 in the bank. They were willing to contribute 600K, 600,000 in an email to pay, but that is also gonna, that's going to pay for the alleyways. So we only looking at, yes, that goes towards alleyways and any excess would go towards, you know, what we're trying to go out and borrow. And that cost is probably around 500,000 on, based on that 2.5.
So the alleyways are not included in the 2.5?
Yeah, they are.
They are.
But their 600K has got to cover the alleyway portion first.
Which is fine, it still takes that total down then.
Yeah, it still comes down, and that's why I still say we got that million-dollar gap.
All right, so. So if we finance the whole 2.5 million dollars that we decide to do, then we could take the 600,000 and pay that towards the loan immediately?
No, the 600K, we don't do alleyways. We're not, none of our, our contract is not covering alleyways. We don't take over alleyways. We only doing the, the other items. Their 600,000 will pay, go first towards the alleyways. Under the amount of 2.5 or 2.6, that will leave approximately $100,000 to reduce the amount we have to finance. So that's why I said it's about 1.92 million. Now, if you look at the 3.8 number, we get nothing. We, that's why we had the 3.1, because the alleyways is about 700 or something like that thousand. Let me go.
So, so I, I think, I, I think the confusion is, is the, the alleyways, they have to pay those upfront because we can't put them as a part of the MSBU. So they, that, their first money they have to, to pay their, their private roads, which are the alleyways. Whatever's left over out of the 600, not, not a lot, would go toward the down payment on the rest of the public roads or roads they want to go public with.
Let me give you the exact numbers. Out of the 2.518 or 894, the alleyway estimated cost is 486,000, okay? And that leaves 2,032,000, okay? So if they're going to give us six, that first 600, that first 500 got to cover the alleyways. So that'd be another 100,000 off of the 2 million. That's why I'm saying 1.9 around 2 million. Are we good?
So what will we put the RFP?
About the 1.9.
For the 1.9. That's what I'm trying to get to. All right, so I'm, I'm good.
They're good.
So the 1.9, I'm sorry, repeat that again? 1.9 would go?
1.9 to 2 million, because it's going to be fees associated with it, and a cost incurred and fees got to be recovered.
So, so the amount financed will be around 2 million bucks?
Yes, estimating, yes.
So the question is, it doesn't get, it goes through the process, because I do have it here. Actually, it's 32 steps, 33 steps?
33 steps, yes ma'am. If, if we start now, we come in November to, for reimbursement resolution, because we need to add that to our reimbursement resolution. And then we go through a process on November 6th, we'll have to advertise four consecutive weeks. So if you want to proceed with that, I'm also going to need your authority to begin with that advertising for the four consecutive weeks. Or I can get it when I come with the reimbursement resolutions.
So some of these steps can be going, can be concurrent?
No.
All of these are?
Step by step.
Step by step. What happens after September 25th?
Oh, it'll be on the tax roll. You're talking about the 2025?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's when we, we won't get the money until that next year.
When do we take the roads over if we say yes?
If we do the construction easement, I think Cliff kind of explained that, is at the end of construction.
Once we certify that they're built to standards, that's what we're doing. The only reason this is happening is because for us to take them over, we're not going to take them in their current condition. So there, the association is saying, okay, we don't have the money to do them, but if you will help us essentially get it financed, you'll get your money back through the special assessment. And then when you take them over, they'll be up to your standards. So you have that burden going forward. Essentially, that's what this is all about.
So from now until next September, they're actually taking care of their roads. We won't be involved with those roads.
We can't because they're private roads.
Okay, if we're going to go out and get the loan, if you can see here, on step number 24?
24.
And if we want to honor these contract prices, okay? And if we want to honor these contract prices, okay, we're gonna be probably doing that roadway improvement somewhere probably in April, May, in, you know, April, May, and June. If you want to proceed based on this schedule. So we will own them before we start getting the money. So we have that gap to consider as well. So all of that would be discussed with the methodology consultant to make sure that assessment is set at the right rate.
How long does the MSBU last? So if we're, we have a term of fifteen years-ish for our debt repayment. Does the MSBU do that, it ends at fifteen years, or is it just in perpetuity until we say no more?
For the purpose.
And so it's it's got to be to fund that exclusively. Once that's funded, it's done.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
I mean, unless they wanted to to go back and do streetlights or something, you could you could.
I think it would be a different, yeah, process and stuff like that.
Any other questions, Commissioner Blaskis?
I oh, I want to disclose though that I did get a phone call, I believe it was this morning, I did get a phone call this morning, I spoke to a resident at Emerson Park, and is he here, Mr. Jose? Okay, the the question I want to ask you that I didn't ask you when we were on the phone, were there others present in your home when you were talking to me?
Well, we'll we'll have him come down. Let's let's get through the, well, let's let's get through these questions.
And um and then I received two emails in support of the city taking over the roads. So I just wanted to disclose that. The the only thing that I have a concern with, was this the only solution that they had, was to come to the city?
Oh, I'm not aware if they went after the developer or tried to secure financing on their own. Uh, is is it anyone who can speak to that?
I didn't ask, I mean, we we.
Yeah, I don't know if they've exhausted all other remedies or not.
Well, well, let's let's get through.
You don't want to do it now?
Hang on, just one sec. I mean, they can ask questions.
Okay.
Um, well, Commissioner.
Thank you though. Okay, just a few questions. So are there any other expenses that will we will occur um before the RFP, like for the assessments or anything?
Well, for the methodology consultant, you know, it's gonna be a cost, and we will be tracking it.
Do you have the estimated cost of what that will be?
No, not at this time, I do not.
Is that fee will be actually passing back on to?
That's the intent, definitely.
But we're not sure what that cost is.
Not at this time, I do not know.
Okay.
I I I can't even tell you. I did ask when the bond counsel kind of mentioned it, I I but I don't, I hate putting numbers out there, then I'm not sure.
So any other questions for either Blanch or for Hilltop or for, I don't know, Michael Ortiz is in the room, if you need to, who's our guys will be handling the 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 project? Anybody, if not, we'll we'll go ahead and bring up for public comment.
Do you want this gentleman to answer her question?
She if he wants to come first, that's great. Um, or I think they've got kind of a, they've got it all kind of planned out.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Hay, Board President of Emerson Park, and I have my board with me tonight. Um, I would like to ask Emerson Park residents to stand up, please.
Yep, here they are.
No, they're here.
Oh, wow.
And yes, raise your hand if you are standing already. Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys coming out and supporting this. On behalf of Emerson Park HOA, we appreciate your ongoing support in working towards a solution for the private to public roads project. Our board would like to take a moment to share how we arrived at this point. Emerson Park, developed in two thousand and seven, was planned as a mixed-use community with single-family homes, townhomes, and a public town center with public access roads. However, after Centex, the builder, abandoned the town center and roads, and the green spaces were re-designated as private, though future easements were granted to two private entities at the front of her entrance without informing the residents. After the Pulte Centex buyout in two thousand and nine, construction resumed by Lennar Homes, but no records show how that developmental rights were officially transferred. Alarmingly, neither builder disclosed to homeowners that the roads were private, and the neighborhood's layout, city street signs, and ungated entrances implied that the roads were public. As an original homeowner, I can attest that Lennar continued to sell the vision of a future town center in two thousand and fourteen. That's roughly five years after we later learned the project was abandoned. Our entrance is nearly three-fourths of a mile long and has vacant street parking where the town center was planned. Yet Emerson Park residents are left to maintain that, along with five miles of roads, ten-plus medians, a retention pond, and green spaces where no homes were built. Though this situation wasn't caused by the current administration, Emerson Park residents have long borne the financial burden of these decisions. Why was a certificate of completion granted to a builder without ensuring gates for private roads? Worse, neither builder budgeted for road replacement reserves, leaving us unprepared for future maintenance needs. Our HOA manages over sixty-four acres of common area, including a private park with hundreds of mature trees that need annual tree trimming, sidewalks, brick pavers, and countless landscape meant for a public town center, which is now a significant expense for our homeowners. In fact, we maintain more land than almost every park that the City of Apopka maintains. Yet, there was no protection for future residents. Since two thousand and eight, Emerson Park residents have paid the same taxes as public road communities without receiving any tax benefit. Our roads have always functioned as public, and we've suffered due to decisions made without our input. In December, we as a community voted for this project. It was an exhaustive forty-five day effort to capture the community's votes, and we prevailed with more than ninety-five percent of the votes received in favor of public roads. I would, uh, uh, thank you so much for everyone for standing. We urge you to vote yes on this project. While you weren't part of the problem, you have an opportunity to be part of the solution and stand with our residents. Thank you, and I now yield my time to Jose.
Mayor, Commissioners. I think she already said pretty much everything that needed to be said, but I just want to share my personal story here because when I purchased my townhome in in Emerson Park, I review all the closing documents, including all one hundred and twenty-two pages of the bylaws. And even though I am a real estate attorney, it wasn't clear to me that the roads were private. Now, I became involved with the HOA and the association, and I learned that originally this was supposed to be a mixed-use community. And the roads there were meant to serve public access for amenities that were going to be be built by the developer, but were never built. In fact, if you read the bylaws, our community was supposed to be a gated community, and I assure you, there is no gate. There's no gate. We are not a gated community. And so I understand that during the construction of Emerson Park, the plans were changed. They were altered, and all of the sudden, the roads became private roads with a proper notice to the residents. So we believe that this current, the current situation right now, right now is pretty unfair to our community. Despite despite paying taxes like any other Apopka resident that has access to public roads in their subdivisions, our HOA is solely responsible for sixty-four acres, to maintain sixty-four acres of common areas, including the part, uh, the roadways that everybody uses in Apopka. So I don't know if you noticed, but over the past fifteen years, there has been a lot of development in Apopka. And Emerson Park is surrounded by development, uh, including a Hilltop Reserve subdivision, uh, the Aspen Health Hospital, and the Martin Ridge Apartments. They all have contributed significant increase in traffic, where my understanding is that sometimes the traffic from outside our community is larger than our own domestic traffic. So, you know, we're not asking the city to assume any type of financial responsibility for us. We want to pay our, you know, we want to pay our fair share. But what we want to, we're asking the board is to allow us to use the city's buying power and expertise to bring our roadways up to city standards and to also give us or establish a funding mechanism to allow our residents a reasonable amount of time to repay these costs with interest, by the way. And finally, we ask that open completion of these improvements. Once we bring these roads to city standards, take the roadways, take the ownership of the roadways and maintain them with the taxes that we have been paying, but haven't been used for that purpose. So we believe that this will not only benefit Emerson Park residents, but also all the Apopka residents that are using these roads, these roadways without paying for them. Thank you, all members, Mayor.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Latisha Nguyen, Director of Emerson Park HOA. I wanted to bring to you guys um attention the direct neighborhoods that the city has supported. Um, the Sheiler Oaks Drainage Improvement Project for the estimated cost of two hundred and fifty thousand that was assigned from the American Rescue Plan for the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Also, the Clear Lake Estate Pump Station, estimated at six hundred thousand. And this request was, is to negotiate access easements for the city to construct access and maintain the pump systems. Also, the neighborhood support that the city has provided using the MSBU, um, the mainline village development. In two thousand and thirteen, the City of Apopka imposed a special assessment against private real property within the incorporated area of the city for the cost of providing upkeep and maintenance of common areas. As well as the Main Avenue Villas West, AKA Fern Hollow. In two thousand and fourteen, the Homeowners Association was dissolved, and the common properties were not being maintained. This caused a problem to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the subdivision. The city council found that it was appropriate to spread the obligation improvements of the cost over a period of time in order to ease the burden upon the residents of the Main Avenue Villas West. I also want to note that um Emerson Park does not have a streetlight MSBU um that is established and that was effective in two thousand and twenty. The Apopka City Council adopted a policy wherein new developments within the city are responsible for the associated expenses for the cost and operation of street lighting within their individual, individual communities. The charge was prompted by the fact that these previously were paid for out of the gas tax revenue. And with the change in attitudes towards fossil fuels and the need for additional street paving and repair, the council felt it best to look for an alternative funding source for street lighting expenses. Now, um Emerson Park does not have a MSU, MSBU streetlight um funding. Um, Duke Energy builds Emerson Park HOA monthly for electricity and maintenance. Um, and that's running um a a cost of around seventy-two thousand per year. I'm gonna turn all the finances to Dave Woods.
Thank you.
Can I ask her, where'd you get, where'd you get all this information? Because I do, I thought it was interesting that she had all the information of different uh.
Just doing research.
What?
Doing research, city records and that.
Okay. Thought that was interesting.
Hi, my name's Dave Woods, and I'm the treasurer of the Emerson Park HOA. I'd like to start with, I thank you all for considering uh this proposal from us. And we do appreciate that the city has helped a lot of neighborhoods, as we just went through. What we are doing is just asking for three things. First, we would like to use the city's buying power to, and your expertise, excuse me, to bring the roadways up to the city's standards. We also would like the city to provide us a funding source uh using a MSBU to provide the residents of Emerson Park a, excuse me, a reasonable amount of time um to totally pay with interest for these roadways. I had some dental surgery, so that's why I'm pausing here. Uh, on completion of the work, we would uh and have the streets to city standard, uh, we would like the city to uh assume responsibilities for these going forward. Overall, um, we just, we'd like you to help us out. We have, um, as you can tell, been burdened with a situation that none of us knew about going in, including people here on city council, because it's all happened way before your times. Um, and what just as Jennifer said, we'd like to just make it right um in helping us out. Again, we're not asking for you to fund this out of city coffers. What we're asking you to do is help us, and we're willing to pay it uh going forward. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for any of the team from Emerson Park? All right, thank y'all for coming out tonight. Appreciate you. All right, so we'll bring it back. Um, any other final thoughts? Oh, anybody, yes, sure, come on.
I'm going to be can be three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Neither here to speak for the motion or against the motion. What I want to do is just bring up some some facts for us all to consider. First of all, it's a little bit ironic when you want to bring your subdivision standard roads up to City of Apopka standard roads. Take a drive down Golden Gem Road someday, you'll see what the standards of city roads and Orange County roads are. But there's two things here that are critical. One is the timeframe, and the other is where we get the finances from. I don't think there's there's any risk in what we're doing for Emerson. And I do see that they have equity in sixty-seven acres of park. I mean, is there any way that they can put that up as collateral for 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 safeguarding alone? There's lots of different ways that I see that we can work with them. What I do think important is that this city comes together as a community, and we work together as a community. This is going to be a very difficult decision for Commissioners, because I think there's several groups here tonight. They have a large audience, and they're all vying for funding. And where are we going to get that funding from? I don't know. We have a group here, I think, who are flooded out just now with power lines down. If we're gonna help them, we're gonna have to find money. We're gonna have to find a lot of money. So that's something you take into consideration, you know, how how do we raise money? It's not just a case of handing it out. Is there any way we can, we can, we can benefit all from it? And I see several ways to do it, but again, that's not my job to instruct these people or you. All I'm saying is that there's going to be a lot of money asked for over the next few weeks for one reason or other. And we need tonight, before we make decisions, look to the future and decide how we're going to help all the communities. And we have a duty to do this, and it's your duty to find ways to do it. And one of the things that I strongly believe we should be doing is having a lot more workshops in here. Because there are ways that we can all come up, and we can all add our expertise to make things happen in the city, make it a better place, make it a community.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay, close the public hearing. Any final questions for any of the staff or if if not, oh, I'm sorry, come on down.
Um, yes, good evening, just for educational purposes, because you all know I was here before.
before. For those of you who...
Name and address for the record.
Tricia Morris, Apopka, Florida, 32712. So I remember being here not too long ago. I was told that we were, we had a negative $3 million. And so when I'm hearing, you know, I didn't get to hear the beginning, I just wanted to know. I know that the mileage rate is going up by 22%, sanitation by 20, by 10%, the water by 23 point something percent. I'm a homeowner and I am stressed and I'm struggling. So I wanted to know, is this also going to increase my cost? That's all I want to know.
No.
All right. Thank you so much.
Virginia Street, 2119 Palmview Vista. The only question I have is, I looked at the projected and the actual packet that was included in our agenda, and I saw a lot of overflow money. Is that true?
Over, overflow money?
Yeah, you know, the...
Carryforward? Is that what you're talking about?
A lot of carryforward money. So why do we have to get a loan if we got carryflow money? We got carryforward money? That's my question. Why can't we fund this now and take care of it that way with our carryforward money? This is my question. I'm just...
We, we are.
Okay, so why would we even need to get a loan?
Well, it, it's, it's, they're, we're, we're just the conduit for the loan. All we are, they're going to have property taxes, MSBU's that will be, they have to pay.
Right.
Those MSBU dollars come to the City of Apopka and then the City of Apopka will pay the loan.
But why do we have to get a loan?
Huh?
Is there a reason for the loan?
We get paid for private roads. And so according to city standards, until they come up to our city standards, that's when we can take over. And so they have to pay that cost to bring it up to city standards.
Right.
And so that's why they're going after a loan to cover that cost.
They're going, we're going after a loan?
Yeah, we're doing it, but they're going to pay it back through the special assessment.
But why can't we be there alone?
Because we, we don't borrow, we're not an ending institution.
We are not a bank and we are not allowed to be a bank.
I get it, I get it. I get it now. I get it, I get it, I get it. It just seems like that I saw a lot of...
That carryover is money that was budgeted in previous years.
Can you please speak into the mic, Mrs. Sherman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just so we can all understand the answer.
I mean, I'm trying not to step on her toes and that. But that's what the carryover is, is for project funds that were budgeted a previous year didn't get spent.
Right.
But we're now getting ready to move forward with that project, so we're bringing that money forward. So, I don't know, but that's not a part of this right here, but I know how you're trying to relate.
I think Mrs. Street, and I don't mean to interrupt and tell me if I'm wrong, I think her point is, instead of, I mean, we've taken, and a gentleman just spoke about it, Golden Gem Road is not up to city standards, but we took it over. And it's going to need to be redone very soon, if not yesterday. The point that I think is being made is that a lender's making interest on these residents, why can't the city make interest on these residents and it stays within our funds then?
I don't think we legally can do that. Can we do that?
And the answer is, we cannot be a bank, period.
Okay.
But we can take over their streets now if we wanted to.
We could take over their streets now and then they would be our streets and then we can spend whatever we need to to fix them.
Not according to the ordinance, right? Or something that, why do we say we got to bring it up to city standards then?
That, that's the whole point, is that we didn't want to take them over, except if they were at city standards because of the increased cost. We were passing the cost of bringing up to the standards to the homeowners. Then, the, the best way to look at it, the analogy would be, if I'm a developer and I come to you with a new community and I build everything out, but they're, they're always intended to be public streets. Let's say, say that was always the intention. Before we will do that, we make the developer put up a maintenance bond for a certain period of time and we make them put the streets before we will agree to take them over in certified condition that we say, yeah, they meet all the standards, we will take them over, plus you're going to put a bond up for like three years, so if it has any unanticipated maintenance, it goes to you. The only difference here is, there's no developer. These are homeowners who have streets that have, they've gotten, and for whatever reason, I mean, I heard all the stories, I don't know the backdrop, but they're saying, we don't want to be in the street business. How do we get out of the street business? Will you take them over? Well, yeah, but just like we would tell the developer, you got to bring them up to standards or we're not going to do it. That's what this is about.
So, and understood and completely heard on that. So, I guess the, the, again, the question is, I guess, are we able to take over the streets and then create an MSBU?
No. The whole idea of the MSBU is, they're paying for their benefits, which is to get the streets brought up to standards. After that, when we take them over, they're still going to be paying back to get them to the point where we would take them over, but that's like a past transaction and on a go-forward basis, then we keep them up.
So, and just to clarify again, there's no way that we can do a, like, a post MSBU? I can't take over a street and then create an MSBU for it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else from the public?
Are you done? I'm done.
Okay.
I, I, I have, have one, have one question.
I asked her, did she have one more question?
Okay, my, my question is, I heard a couple times reference that they've been paying the same taxes as other communities that have public roads, but they haven't been getting benefits. So does public communities pay a different tax than gated communities?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Gated communities pay the same taxes, they don't get the benefit. So, I mean, I, that's not a, not a great argument. Because they pay the same, a gated community pays the same taxes and they get no benefit of the road repayment. So, I, that, that argument's probably not one I would have used, but anyway, I don't, I don't think that it's still, it's, I think what they're, what, what we're saying is, to me, it looks like it's the same as a new developer coming in, building a brand new road, and then as, as Cliff Shepard says, meets our standards, then we take it over. So it's, as I see it, there's no difference between a brand new neighborhood and Emerson Park. They meet our standards, we take the road over, and then it's, then it's ours to maintain.
Can we do an MSBU now, then take the street over, and then fund it personally and charge them interest?
And let me explain. First of all, the reason for, an MSBU in this context is really improperly used, but we'll just go with it. Special assessment, for what you'd be saying. You'd use special assessments for situations like this, and usually, there's no involvement of the city taking over anything. You're saying to a neighborhood that is private and tends to stay private, but doesn't have the ability to fund itself, here's what we can do to help you. There's a mechanism by which we can get the funding, you have to pay it back through your tax bills as a special assessment, but we're never otherwise involved, except as the mechanism by which you get the funding. And that could be true here. We could get them the funding, bring them up to standard and say, go have fun with your new roads. The difference here is, we are also being asked to take them over, but only after they're up to standards. And we are not a bank. There is no scenario in which we will loan money to anybody for interest. We are not a bank.
What's the estimated interest rate that we'll pay for this?
Still around four?
Yeah, I know we won't, it depends on timing, it depends on so many things.
Yeah, because it's going to be around February.
A rough range.
Similar to, I think, what we talked about previously, it's still probably 5% in that, in that ballpark. And again, I think 15 here is probably a safer assumption right now from, for a repayment term. Obviously, we could try to look at 20, but there's very, a lot fewer lenders.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any final thoughts? If not, looking for...
What's the pleasure of the council, whether to proceed or not to proceed?
Looking for a motion to approve the assessment project for the Emerson Park development.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I'm not going to ask y'all to leave, but if you left, you would help me fill some spots. We'll just wait this one.
All right. Keep doing it.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
You've had absolutely...
You won.
Oh, good, how are you? It's, I didn't realize you were sitting there.
Susan?
Ordinance Number 3073. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the hereinafter-described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Stacy and Robert Moss and Timothy Birchfield, located west of Golden Gem Road, south of Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road, comprising 19.76 acres more or less, providing directions to, to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Albert McKee, 3603 Golden Gem Road. I'm not against this ordinance, but what I will suggest you is that if we annex this property into Golden Gem Road, it then becomes part of the KPI, because it's within the boundaries for the KPI. So that when it comes into the KPI, I believe with the mixed use that they could have, that's potentially another 400 houses. I think it's 19 homes per acre we could, we could have in 20 acres. Obviously, there's part of that space got to be set aside for, for other bits and pieces. So again, we're going to have more traffic on Golden Gem Road. Now, I think it's an opportunity, and it's an opportunity to take action on Golden Gem Road. It's a little bit ironic that we just discussed not being able to take over a road because it wasn't up to city standards. Didn't we just take over Golden Gem Road? It's not up to city standards. So, we've got double standards here. So if we do decide to annex these properties in, let's make sure that we don't just have one end of Golden Gem Road, which is going to be golden, as in Golden Groves, and the other end of Golden Gem Road left destitute. So Commissioners, please consider it. When the future requests come up here, we need the whole of Golden Gem Road to be treated the same. We're about to annex something in, and I've got no objection to it, I think it's a good idea, but we need to be fair to everybody.
Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 3073.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
So it's three to two with Commissioner Velazquez and Commissioner Nesta in opposition. Next up, Ordinance Number 3067.
Ordinance Number 3067. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Andich Road and Effie Drive, comprising 54.84 acres more or less, owned by PMS1 REO LLC, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 3067, amending the future land use for Andich South properties from county rural to mixed use, as well as approve the transmittal to the Florida Department of Commerce. The properties are located on southwest corner of Andich Road and Effie Drive, approximately 54.8 acres in size. These properties were annexed into the city in August 21st, 2024, under Ordinance Number The properties are within the Waukaiwa Parkway Interchange Vision Plan area, and per the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Amendment Policy 20.9, as well as the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code, they're required to have a mixed-use future land use designation. Therefore, the DRC recommends approval at its meeting on October 8, 2024. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval and the transmittal of the proposed future land use amendment. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 3067, as well as approve the transmittal to the Florida Department of Commerce. Have an applicant available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean Sanchez? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Albert McKee, 3603 Golden Gem Road. It would appear that there's going to be considerable problems with school concurrency. We're talking about a potential moratorium for development in Apopka. Really, we don't need a moratorium. All you have to do is ask yourself, are these developments already up to date with concurrency for school? If they don't have the school concurrency, then they need to get it before we approve their developments.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve...
I just want to kind of respond to that quickly, because I did ask that question. Is Bobby here? Bobby Allen?
Jean, Jean, oh, yeah. Okay, there he is. I didn't see him.
Yeah. Can you just kind of explain the, the school situation?
Sure. Right now, you're considering a future land use amendment, and so, under the county's charter, which goes back to the year 2000, there's school capacity. Whenever there's an increase in density for a rezoning or a future land use amendment, which is what this is, is a future land use amendment, one of the things that's looked at is capacity in the school system. So, every, pretty much every development that comes in here, it does not have capacity. And so, we get something back from the school board that says they're deficient X number seats at elementary, Melor High School. In this case, I think it was at the high school level that it was deficient. That's one of the things that the board can use to make their decision on a comprehensive plan amendment.
But not at this stage?
At this stage, yes. And then concurrency is basically, that has to be in place prior to the issuance of a development order. This is not a development order, this is a comprehensive plan, it's a land use matter. And they failed all that, yes.
Failed all three school levels.
Can you, Jean?
So, they failed all three levels? Let me just read it to you.
They do.
Yes, which is honestly, frankly, it's not unusual with our development review applications at this stage. So they failed elementary school, it was deficient by about 21 seats, middle school was deficient by about 26 seats, and high school is deficient by about 38 seats, which means that at the time of development plan, they would have to enter into a concurrency mitigation agreement with OCPS.
I just wanted to explain that, so that the public could understand that this stage, the school, not having enough seats at the school, doesn't affect the rezoning.
Correct. So at capacity stage, it's my understanding, at least when Bobby and I have talked to OCPS in previous years, that with capacity, the school doesn't determine or take into account adjacent school seats. But a concurrency, they do, which means they can accommodate for more students and with the funds, they can mitigate. I don't know how other, how else it works from there, but I know they have a formula in their Excel spreadsheet that tells them where the adjacent schools are.
Okay.
Okay, and they'll tell you about 90% of our residential development applications that go through entitlements with future land use, as well as their major development plans, you know, have failed capacity in some form or another.
And so, have we, have we spoken with our school district representative regarding this and the developments?
Staff has only spoken to... Staff has only spoken to OCPS staff, which, you know, could be limited. So I'm not sure if there's dialogue between you all and the school representative.
You want to have the applicant come up and maybe he can answer a couple of these questions for you?
Sure. Luke Klassen with Appian Engineering, two 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 one, the road. As staff indicated to you, so the capacity is done at future land use. That's really like a snapshot in time of where the schools are right now. That does not consider adjacency. In addition, once you get down to concurrency, which does consider adjacency for the adjacent schools, at that point, then you also, the applicant or my client, has the ability to file for a mitigation agreement with the school. So the applicant will coordinate with the school and get a mitigation agreement if there's one required at that time at concurrency. But during capacity, that's not the right timing for this.
Okay. Any other questions?
And we, we're not even allowed to apply for the concurrency at this time.
Until you move forward. So the, and this is just for my information, the mitigation agreement that you may take, is that like a price per seat that you have to pay extra into if there is a deficiency?
Correct. It can be. There's different types of mitigation agreements, and OCPS would coordinate with my client when we apply for that at concurrency. But you cannot apply for that capacity where, this stage right now.
Understood. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or Jean?
No, I just wanted to be able, so that the public can understand the different, the process and different stages when the school not having the capacity really affects the development. At this stage, it doesn't.
Yeah, and the interesting thing is the capacity too, because it's a snapshot in time currently, this development, the project built out, you're looking at five to seven years before this project is built out. And so if you're looking at a snapshot today, and you have a project that's not going to be built out for seven years, as you know, there's a lot of things that have changed. And so concurrency takes that into consideration, the project build out and the adjacency for schools. Capacity does not. So it's.
I know that OCPS has a high school site and I want to say it's either an elementary or a K eight.
They haven't indicated that it'll be all, but based on the size, I agree with you, Mayor. It's roughly a hundred and sixty acres of Round Lake and Kelly Park. Based on what the current sizes are that they look for for high schools, middle schools, and elementary, you could fit all three and still have room for bus parking. So it's, I believe that's the indication, but it's not, it's not in their current plan.
Any other questions for the applicant? Anybody else want to speak on this one? Okay.
Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteen, Palmus Drive. The only thing, the only concern I have is that yes, I understand it's a time that you're looking at it, but if you, we've got ten different things going on at the same time. Right? So if everybody is moving at the same speed and you got five hundred homes over here, two hundred homes over here, you know, that's causing a delay in building these schools. I mean, Wolf Lake, that's how they got created. Wakava, that's how it got created. They waited until after the school was overcrowded before they started building anything. So again, yes, I know this, we're just looking at this one right now, but in our package, we got several more that are in there, and we approve them all. And the same, same thing is going to happen. We're going to have to build another middle school, another elementary school, another high school. You know, and you're reacting instead of being proactive about building these schools. And it's, it's going to cause a problem later. Same thing with the other resources that are going to be needed for roads and lights, everything else. We're just reacting to stuff. And that's just not a good way to, I want to be responding in our environment. It's just a reaction kind of thing. We don't know, do we know how many houses we're going to try to put on this piece of property? It's in there.
One of the things, I mean, I don't know what the number is for OCPS, but I want to say they don't even look at a new, a new school until they're twenty percent over capacity. Is that, Tom, is that a, okay. So you can't, you can't even talk about building a new school because the problem is when you build a new school, if you're under capacity, then the cost per student goes way up. So you have to be over the capacity before you can build a new school. So it's not, you can't, you have to be reactive. You can't be proactive on schools.
Okay, but then what's the purpose of having this checkbox in here saying that we went through OCPS to tell us anything? There's no purpose. Just wasting time. That's all my comments.
All right. No other questions, then look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand sixty-seven at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand sixty-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand sixty-eight. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A one to citrus rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Andich Road and Effie Drive, comprising fifty-four point eight five acres more or less, owned by PMS one REO LLC, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is the zoning companion to the preceding future land use amendment item. My request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero six eight, changing the zoning from county A one to KPMU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, as well as assignment of transition and neighborhood overlays and approval of the master plan for Andich South. The subject properties are currently zoned county A one and have a future land use designation of county rural, located at the northern terminus of Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. The proposed KPI zoning as well as the transition and neighborhood district overlays are compatible with the intent of the city's comprehensive plan as well as the KPI Form-Based Code. The master plan details a conceptual plan for a mix of residential products comprising three hundred and twenty-six single-family detached and attached units on approximately fifty-four acres. The plan calls for a hundred and ninety-three townhome units, ninety-five rear-loaded lots with thirty-four feet of width, and thirty-eight rear-loaded lots with forty, forty feet of width. The transition overlay requires an open space area of fifteen percent, and the neighborhood overlay requires twenty percent. The applicant is proposing a total of eleven point two acres of open space that encompass an amenity area, playground, buffer, and a anti-stormwater pond. The master plan also shows approximate access points and connections. There are internal connection points offered from the south of the subdivision, including a link to the crossroads development to the south via Fiber Drive right of way, and two others east of said right of way. Finite details of the site layout and access points will be provided at the time of major development plan and construction site plan process. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the change of zoning, as well as the assignment of the overlays and master plan. Recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero six eight. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
I have a quick question. This is in, an approval of the site plan, correct? And will the site plan ever come back to us?
The major development will go back to you, and this will go back to you for a second reading. The master plan is an exhibit to the ordinance. And the rezoning itself is, of course, in the ordinance as well as the establishment of the overlays.
Okay. The only concern on this, and residents brought this up before too, especially on some of these tighter lots, is that we're not making driveways long enough. And so we're hanging our big SUVs or trucks out into sidewalks and into the road. So I just want to make sure that's just some type of process that's put into a thought process moving forward.
Oh, sure. And certainly, you're welcome to make those comments on the master plan now, but yes.
Understood.
I did, I did ask. I did ask the engineer about the driveways.
Yeah, Luke Klassen, Appian Engineering. That's a good point. Per the code, it's actually required at least six feet for the rear loader. We are not meeting that. We're exceeding that in our development standards. And the development standards that are, would be adopted with this rezoning would lock us into that. So we're basically stating the KPI standards are six feet. We're acknowledging we're giving twenty. Typically, we do twenty-five, but that's so you don't block a sidewalk. Recall that that's only for the rear-loaded product that does not have sidewalks in back. It's twenty. The front-loaded, it's thirty feet from the garage to the, so rear-loaded is what our standard are. But these are rear-loaded, and we're doing twenty feet because there's no sidewalk, sorry, on the driveways.
Understood. Thank you.
So we are exceeding KPI code.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand sixty-eight, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number?
Ordinance number three thousand seventy-five. An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Apopka by amending Part Three, Land Development Code, Article Four, Use Regulations, Section four point two, Principal Uses, Table four point two point two C, Principal Use Table, to allow recreation facility outdoor as a permitted use in the Seacore Corridor Commercial District and MUD, Mixed Use Downtown Zoning District, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Good evening. Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. Ordinance number thirty seventy-five proposes to permit outdoor recreation as a permitted use in the mixed-use downtown and commercial corridor zoning districts. Currently, this is a permitted use in the Ag, RMF, CC, CR, IL, MU, ESGT, MU, SRTE zoning districts, but without, it's not a permitted use within the mixed-use downtown and the Seacore zoning districts. We had a property owner here in the downtown who came to us looking to do a pickleball court, and unfortunately, that's not a permitted use. But with this text amendment, that would make it a permitted use in addition to other types of outdoor recreation. And it would help facilitate bringing people into the downtown and help work with the CRA and things like that as well. Additionally, allowing it as a permitted use in the Seacore might open up to some of these bigger franchises who do some of these outdoor recreation uses as well. The Planning Commission last Tuesday night unanimously recommended approval on the recommended motion this evening to accept first reading, hold it over for second reading and adoption on November sixth. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Bobby? Okay. Anybody from the public who should speak? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand seventy-five at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand seventy-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand seventy-eight. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural, city FLU in progress, and city residential very low suburban to mixed use for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and east of Chandler Road, owned by Orchid Estate HOA Community, Mega GNG LLC, Jacob Snadley, two six, four six two five Chandler Road LLC, Matthew and Debra Shaw, Daphne Martin, Walter H. Robinson III, Yu Sheik, Irrevocable Trust, PMSS one REO LLC, comprising of a hundred and sixteen point nine four acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
For the record, Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. The applicant has submitted a large-scale future land use amendment from county rural, city future land use in progress, and city residential very low suburban to mixed use. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to bring the property into the neighborhood character zone of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. This part of the Kelly Park Form-Based Code area permits a maximum density of five dwelling units an acre. The total site area is a hundred and sixteen point nine four acres and is located at twenty-three fifty Kelly, West Kelly Park Road. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to allow for the potential development of three hundred and ninety-two single-family residences, which is not permitted under the current future land use designation. They're allowed to do single-family residences, but not at the density that they're seeking to apply for. Future land use and zoning shows the character of the surrounding properties. The orange to the north is in the Kelly Park Form-Based Code area and has a mixed-use future land use designation. So this is consistent with the surrounding future land use designations. Orange County Public Schools has indicated capacity is not available at the high school level and is deficient by twenty point eight eight one seats. The Development Review Committee recommended approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval on October eighth. And the recommended motion this evening is to accept first reading ordinance number thirty seventy-eight and authorize staff to transmit this to the Florida Department of Commerce. As this is over fifty acres in size, Florida law requires us to send it to the state. They will review it and then send it back, and the second reading would be at a date to be determined. Myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
I just want to ex parte, which I did meet with them yesterday. I met with Jonathan Hughes and Luke Klassen specifically on this, this development, because I had a concern with the KPI. But I understand that this completes the KPI on, is it Jason Dwelling? Jason Dwelling. So I just wanted to kind of put that out with that.
Any other questions for Bobby or the applicant?
The, the only thing, and we discussed this in our meeting, was just a concern that we can't get direct access to Kelly Park School, but I'm hoping that we can work on something to get sidewalks in some capacity to Kelly Park School because we have kids just walking in grass right now across the street. So if we can work with the developer to be able to make that happen, and the meeting was productive that we had that said that they were open to that. So that was really important to make sure that our kids, especially the new ones that are going to be here, have safe access. And the developer had said they're going to look into that and work on that. So look forward to that. Thank you.
I think he's nodding his head in the back, so.
Yeah. He's dead.
Luke, okay. All right. Anybody from the public?
Albert McKee, three six oh three, Golden Gem Road. One of the things I noticed just under where it says Planning Commission, it says very low suburban to city mixed use. And this is something that, again, if we want to reduce the effect of development on our community, then we should be looking favorably on the lower density scales of things. Why? Because when you have a lower-density project, it usually means that you have an elevated price range of houses. If you have an elevated price range of houses, your mileage rate is far more effective in terms of what it can do for the city rather than having a large capacity of developments. When you have a large number of developments, then you've got to exponentially increase the ability to service that development. But with the lower-density developments, you're still bringing in a lot of money from the mileage rate, but you don't have the same worry about the infrastructure. So let's all look favorably on lower-density developments rather than these high-development mixed use.
Anybody from, anybody else from the public? Okay, not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand seventy-eight, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand seventy-nine.
Ordinance number three thousand seventy-nine. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city residential low suburban for certain real property located at twenty-three hundred West Poncan Road, owned by Lee Jason Monroe and Lee Cara Dawn, comprising three point five six acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good evening. This is June Son, Planner Two. The applicant has requested a change of future land use of the property located at twenty-three thousand, twenty-three hundred West Poncan Road from county rural to city residential low suburban, which allows three point five dwelling units per acre. The total size of the property is three point five six acre, and the property is currently being used as a single-family house for one household. The property was annexed in two thousand fourteen by ordinance number two thousand three hundred seventy-nine. The property is surrounded by residential land use. The property is surrounded by residential land use, and the proposed land use is consistent and comparable with the surrounding properties. Also, the owner of the property has indicated that there is no future plan for any development on this property. DRC has recommended approval, and on October eighth, Planning Commission has anonymously recommended approval of amending future land use from county rural to city residential low suburban. The recommended motion is accepting the first reading of ordinance number three thousand seventy-nine and hold it over for a second reading and adoption on November sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Staff and applicant are, are available to respond to any question.
Any, any questions for June? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand...
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand eighty.
Ordinance number three thousand eighty. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to RS F One B Residential Single Family District Large Lot for certain real property generally located at twenty-three hundred West Poncan Road, owned by Lee Jason Monroe and Lee Cara Dawn, comprising three point five six acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
For the record, this is June Son Planner Two. The applicant has a request to rezoning of the same property located at twenty-three hundred West Poncan Road from T Transition to RS F One B Residential Single Family District Large Lot, which allows five dwelling units per acre. The total size of the property is three point five six acres. The property is surrounded by residential zoning district, which are RS F One A and RS F One B, and the proposed zoning is consistent and comparable with the surrounding properties. DRC has recommended approval, and on, on October eighth, the Planning Commission has anonymously recommended approval of rezoning from T to RS F One B. The recommended motion is accepting the first reading of ordinance number three thousand eight eighty and holding, holding over for a second reading and adoption on November sixth. The staff and applicant are available to respond to any questions.
Any questions for June? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand eighty at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing rate schedules pertaining to the City of Apopka Building Department Permit Fees and providing an effective date.
Mayor Commissioners, John Hanson, building official. Basically, all I'm doing here is trying to get us in line with everybody else in the area. Since I've been here almost nineteen years, we've only raised one rate, and that was our reinspection fee from fifteen to thirty. And I'm just, I got some, the numbers from Orange County, Orlando, Lake County, Mount Door, and this is just getting us in line with them on our rates.
Any, any questions for John? If anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing and look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, announcing the winner of the Apopka Flag Design Contest and for adoption of the winning design as the official city flag of Apopka.
All right, good evening again, Mayor Commissioners, my name is Stephen Cribs, Special Project Specialist here with the City of Apopka. I, first of all, want to thank you all. When I was up here in August, I announced that there would be a contest, a flag, a design contest to design a new flag for the City of Apopka, and that at the conclusion of that contest, we would have a design here for a vote. I'm very pleased and happy to say the contest went really well, I'll get into some of the statistics for that, and we were able to bring it down to a, a final design after community involvement through submitting designs and voting on designs, and then a panel of judges that was all able to work, to work together to come up with a design I think we can be very proud of. During the original meeting, I laid out a couple of reasons why Apopka could benefit from a new flag. One, that is that we would want something that is unique to the City of Apopka. The current one that we have, it, it looks a lot like several other flags with the, with the crossbars and then the seal over the top. We wanted one that met those rules of design, which I will get into as a refresher of later, and then one that Apopka could have a record of adopting a flag. So I just want to get into a couple of highlights from the competition that we had. So there were a hundred and fifty-three entries, so a hundred and fifty-three different designs that were submitted, and mostly those designs came from the Apopka area. It was, we had, we did receive designs from Texas, North Carolina, Minnesota, Oklahoma, and the United Kingdom. So word about our contest really got out there and even went international there. We actually even had an entire art class submit designs, and that's what that picture of, is of, up on the screen is art class working on designs that they could submit for the flag. Our contest also caught the attention of the North American Vexilological Association, and if you remember from my last presentation, this is an association who studies, engages in flags, it is, it is their passion. So we actually had members of that organization reach out to us, we didn't reach out to them and, and offer their help and expertise. Overall, we had a thousand votes that were cast in this competition. Again, the submission period was the eighth through the sixteenth, that's when we received those hundred and fifty-plus designs, and then at the end of that period, seventy-one of those designs were, were presented for judging. The judging period was on the eighteenth of September, a panel made up of seven judges. We had a local mural artist, teacher-director of a design school, a marketing specialist, content administrator, and then three members of the North American Vexilological Association. The panel selected up to ten designs for that public vote. The vote was put to the public from the twentieth of September through the fourteenth of October. Again, one thousand nineteen total votes were cast. Finalization period was the fifth through the fourteenth, where our judging panel, they got back together, made a couple of tweaks to the design and, and made it visual. And special thanks to Joe Paglis of the North American Vexilological Association. He was actually our graphic designer that volunteered his time to, to put it all together and, and lent his professionalism in that area to us. And so without any further ado, I want to go ahead and reveal the, the winning design to you. All right, yes, so this is the design, and we, yeah, there we go. So this is the design that, that won more votes than any other, and I'm very proud to say that the artist, Mrs. Faith Lee, is actually here in the room with us tonight, so I'm going to call her on up. You'll come on up and join us, if everybody could give her a hand. I had built the presentation for myself to go over the symbolism, as well as give a little bit of background, honestly, but since she is here, I'm going, who, who better than to hear it from her, so I'm going to turn it over to her right now.
Thank you, I first would like to say it was an honor to be a part of this, and I loved it, and there's, actually, the students that you saw on the screen, those were my students, my art students. So I, I've grown up here, and I just, I was so happy to be a part of this. So I want to explain my design. The reason why I chose more of the organic, wavy lines is to represent more of the wildlife and the organic components of our city. We have our springs here in Apopka, and it's just such an important part of our, of our city. The colors that I picked were, you see the two blue wavy lines or stripes, those are to represent our springs. The leaf that you see, of course, is a representation of our greenhouses here, that's a really important part of our city, and the yellow stripe that goes around it and through the flag is to represent our dependence on the sun for our greenhouses, of course, and also to represent the fact that we're part of the sunshine state. So that is my design, and thank you.
Stay, stay right there, he said some of the...
Okay, okay, well, I didn't realize there was going to be all this. So if you wanted to know a little bit more, you can see there on the screen. I am an art and music teacher here in Apopka. I teach grades eighth, kindergarten through eighth. I have sixteen years, you can see on the screen, years of professional experience with special effects. I am a lifelong Apopka resident, like I said before. I was, I grew up here, I married my high school sweetheart, we're raising our kids here, and I just am an Apopka, and so not just me, but our family. We're second generation Apopka's, and we just have such, our, our roots are here in Apopka. So that's just to kind of give you a little bit more of a backstory of why this flag and this design was so important to me.
But we didn't, all the, the details about her were not a part of the voting, so that was not like because she's an Apopka resident that she got extra credit or anything else, it was straight up...
Yeah, we actually, when we did the online voting, when we did the online voting, we actually scrubbed the information. One of the top ten designs that were picked was actually from the UK, and that was, again, the judges didn't even know which ones they were selecting out of those top ten.
I, I have a question, who, who were the, how were the judges selected, who selected the judges?
So the, the judges were selected based off of expertise and, and their professionalism in the area. Like I said, there was a, a mural artist that has done some work for the city before. There was a graphic designer who works for the city that was on the panel, and then a couple of other, like I said, from the design school, I think he was from the Dave School, if I'm not mistaken. So there were a lot of local, they, they were professionals chosen for their expertise in art, but also local, except for, of course, the, the, the four from the North American Vexilological Association. Oh, three members, yes, sorry, that's correct.
Yeah, you have the list there. And the thousand and nineteen votes?
Yes.
Were someone able to vote more than once?
So how the votes were set up is each person was able to go in and vote and rank as kind of, they were given all ten choices, and they could choose which one they most liked to the least liked. But if they wanted to, they could give all of the, they could just do most liked and not rank any of the others. Does that, I don't know if that, that made any sense to you or not. So we had all ten of the, the designs up there, and people could go in, and under each design was a one through ten, and people could rank it, I guess is the better way to say it, one through ten, which one they, they liked the most.
I think she's asking, could somebody vote a hundred times?
Oh, no, it was, it was one, you had to put in your email address before you could vote, yes.
Yeah, you had to, the one thing I kept forgetting, that I kept going back was the Google, you needed your password. I haven't seen my password in years.
Oh, no.
I found me how to get a new password.
Okay, well, well, thank you for doing that, so you could vote. Okay?
And we'll say, you know, you get used to seeing the, the, the flag that has been a staple, and, and then when I saw this, it, it did take a little while. It, it take, it did take a little while, but I'm, I'm sure that you understand that. And, and when I read what each color and your symbol, then it made sense, you know. Somehow, I feel like the people should read the symbolism, and then when they look at it, they'll see it differently. Because what happened was, when I saw it, I, you know, okay, but then when I read the symbolism, then I understood it and saw it in a different light. So congratulations.
Commissioner Anderson, I think you had, you had another...
I, I just, just full disclosure, just looking at it, not, you know, with a description of what it mean, I'm not really sure if it represents, embody the City of Apopka, just looking at it without reading a description of what it is. Because I think most of us probably, we saw, it was like, oh, you know, that was probably most of our reaction, so that's just my opinion.
Yeah, sure, and that again is why that, that symbolism piece and component was so important in the competition. Every entry that was submitted had to have the symbolism written on the back. One of them was actually kind of cute for one of the art contests, for symbolism on the back. One of the kids was like, because I want to pass the class, so that was, that was kind of, that was kind of cute. But, but all of the, the designs had, had to have their symbolism, yeah, that one didn't make the top ten. All of their designs had that symbolism mentioned on, that was a really important piece of the judging process.
Commissioner Smith?
And, oh, sorry.
Well, I guess because we had had conversation prior to the contest, I kind of understood when you told me it couldn't have words and, and things of that nature.
Correct.
And, and I would just kind of understand, you know, how were they going to know it was an Apopka flag? And so when you showed me the criteria, I, I kind of backed off and understood. Now, so I think the, the flag was great, and our photographer's gone, I was hoping that we could get a picture with the winner.
There, oh, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you make sure that, yes, Kelly, come on down.
Commissioner Nesta.
Well, yeah, right, I know. No, I understand, yeah, absolutely, no, I appreciate your, your time in this and, and your, your group's effort for sure. If we can, just get a list of the judge panel, just so we understand who it's created by and, and all that.
Yeah, oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, good, please.
Yes, we do have the names of the judges, and I'll, we just didn't want to make them public necessarily, but that, that's something that we can, we can get to, to you, of course.
That'd be great, and then the presentation that you're using is not the same one that's in our packet, so if you can update that to us as well.
Okay, yes, I can, I can do that, my apologies, okay. Yes, and just as, as a nod again to what Commissioner Smith was saying before, just again, having that side-by-side comparison, and then going back over those standards of design that I have presented to you on the last, and really seeing how, how this flag does accomplish those things, especially with the, the symbolism and the meaning there.
I, I do like that you, the predominant color was green, because that's what really does identify Apopka is that green, and so when I did see it initially, I said, okay, she's using the green as a dominant color. Then when I read again the symbolism and realized the sun and the whole thing, but it'll, it'll take some getting used to, but it is a very sharp-looking flag.
The one thing I'll say is, if you think about a flag waving in the wind, right, like, you know, our, our current flag, you really can't see what it is. You see maybe an X, but everything else just disappears, or I think something like this.
I'm actually going to carry her symbolism, and
Yeah.
and when someone asks me, I'm going to take it out and read it to them. Eventually, our city will get used to it and, and embrace it. I mean, it changes is a little difficult, but it, it happens, and it was a big undertaking to really even change a flag that's been such a staple in the City of Apopka, but...
Absolutely, and I did just want to make one more point, because I know there was some chatter online, I just wanted to address. It, I know some people seem to think that because the seal was no longer going to be on the flag, that we were getting rid of the seal, and that is not, that's not the truth, it's all, the seal is, is staying, the seal's a staple, you know, is voted on, copyrighted, everything like that. This design does not include it on the, on the flag, but the seal of Apopka's not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, so when will we have a flag that we can fly?
I'm sorry?
When will we have a flag that we can fly?
The, the goal is pending council's approval tonight. The first thing I will do when I come in tomorrow is order it so that it can be here for the, the birthday on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this one? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And thank you, the, to the committee for your hard work, I mean, it's taken some, you know, get all these steps in, in, in order so that we could get it, you know, for the, the celebration of the city's, you know, anniversary is pretty cool. So we, thank you, thank you for all you've done.
All right, you said you want to get a picture.
Kelly's here, you got it.
Yes.
All right, next up, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-one.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, providing per budget amendment.
Blanche Sherman, Finance Director, budget amendment in the amount of eight million five hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred dollars. Item number one is related to the creation of the foreclosure fund account that we discussed at the last council meeting in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This is to help cover the filing fees for foreclosure cases on behalf of the city. Each estimated to be about twenty-five hundred, staff needs about fifty thousand in the budget to support the cost of the anticipated filing fees and tax wings. The assumption is that the foreclosure funds will offset these costs. Item number two is related to Northwest Recreation Center water reclaim, reclamation facility expansion in the amount of five point one million dollars, that, that is the contract award with the contingency amount. And me in numbers. On October second, twenty twenty-four, the council approved the ITB to L construction is actually in the amount of five point one seven, seven hundred K for the construction and expansion of the Northwest Recreation Center and Water Treatment Plant in the Northwest Apopka near Jason Dwelling Parkway. The awarded contract amount exceeds, bless you, exceeds, it's okay, bless you. The awarded contract exceeds the budgeted amount, that, it so requires an additional two point two million dollars, which will come from the water, wastewater and reuse impact fees reserved. And we are also asking to roll over the funds that were included in the FY twenty-four budget in the amount of two point nine million dollars. So that totals to five point one. In addition, as we all know, we've been experiencing expenses as a result of the Hurricane Million, Hurricane Milton, and we're estimating those expenses to be about one point seven million dollars. Of course, those funds will have to be transferred from the general fund into our grant fund. We are anticipating reimbursement from FEMA. And that includes structural restoration, debris removal, Thompson Consulting, who's gonna help with, that monitors the debris removal, and some tree removal. Removal. Any questions?
Any questions for Blanche?
I've got one, oh, sorry, please, please.
I have a question in regards to Thompson Consulting, so their consultant fee is two hundred thousand?
Yes. Thompson Consulting.
Do they have a breakdown of the services that they're gonna be offering for the two hundred thousand?
What I'm hearing, seeing here is setting up the monitoring site, monitoring Crowder Golf, verifying invoices provided, and securing dump tickets.
So what FEMA has, you get a contractor that does the work, but then you have to second, have a second contractor that, that monitors the work that's being done. So that Crowder Golf doesn't say they're, they've dumped seven thousand yards of debris. The Thompson would come in and say, no, that was only six thousand yards. So it's, you have the contractor, then you have the contractor that's overseeing the contractor, make sure that what they've done is.
Like a verification.
Verification.
So this is just for me for future reference, I had different local businesses that reached out in regards to this consultant contract, and I told them that I didn't know how they actually could apply for it because it wasn't RFP, so how is this, how do we actually?
I think this is a piggyback, but I can get you the RFP information, but yeah, they are on the contract with us.
Okay.
Yeah, my question was in reference to the Wakava Glen Brook Forest Court, that's a gated community with private streets, so.
No, the one that, yeah, Wakava Glen.
Yes, ma'am.
Forest Court, yes.
Josh?
Dio, Josh, what do you have?
Oh, Josh.
You want Josh or Dio?
It, it's about the, the debris, I think.
This is the structural, this is the structural.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
This is a structural restoration, yeah, the resurfacing of the water main collapse.
Yes, my name is David Atwood, Public Service Director. I, I thought that this job was a water main collapse, right? It may be a private com, um, community, we were calling there because of the safety of the water main, that we had to do some restoration work there.
And that's, so to educate me, please, even though it's a private street, if a water main breaks or something like that, we need, it's our responsibility as a city.
Right, it's our water main, so.
And then we not only fix a water main, but we're gonna fix the street as well, and sidewalks or whatever else is damaged.
Right, hopefully that we'll be, be submitted for FEMA for reimbursement.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Dio or for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
My concern really is regard to emergency response, preparing this plan for, for Apopka. And the reason I'm speaking on this is because I know, prior to the storm arriving, I know a lot of my neighbors put things out, and they thought they were gonna be picked up, things of that nature. But on that particular day, that didn't happen. And calling to the sanitation department, I was told that there was something put on a website or notification through email in regards to things not being picked up. Only thing I saw is that service would resume on the fourteenth. So my question is, you have a lot of miscommunication. I know you saw a lot of things on, online as far as on the news from, whether it's, you know, different counties, mayors, whatever, speaking on that. I think it'd be a good idea for us to have some type of system that lets the residents know exactly what changes have been made from the city's standpoint. Because if you're, you got a storm coming and people are trying to prepare and get things done. And for me, my, my, my neighbor's a senior citizen, so they're, they're seventy years old, pulling stuff out there, and then gotta help them put it back, and then you got a storm coming, so it just kind of had a lot of confusion. I know now, currently in the community, there's a lot of stuff that's out, because there again, they said next week we'll, we would resume service. But then talking to them yesterday, they said, well, they don't know what, when they may be out to pick this stuff up. So that FEMA was gonna come in and pick it up, but I just think at some point, we might need to get into some type of system where residents are aware of what changes are being made at the city level, so we can make the proper changes on our end. So this is my thoughts on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Leroy Bell, twenty-three zero eight, Blue Metal Court. This construction, uh, structure restoration, is this for the citizen or just for city property?
Citizens.
For citizen, okay, because, you know, like Roger just said, this supposed to start it back on the fourteenth to start picking up stuff, the debris. But we, up at, up at Mard Helen up there, we, we got debris everywhere. You know, you, you come through and you pick up the trash and stuff, you know? And, and for us money wise, ain't FEMA gonna pay for this? So where it, the money that we asking for tonight, where is it coming from?
It's coming out of reserves.
General Fund Reserve.
General Fund Reserves.
And we, uh, FEMA gonna pay us back?
Yes, well.
That's the intent.
Yeah, that's the intent, yes.
Okay.
Similar, same process, have them for Ian.
Yeah, you know, because, you know, with the citizens, just up in Mard Helen, people watched the live stream. And the thing about it was, with these, with these organizations like, uh, Commissioner came in last meet, and asked for a hundred thousand dollars, like it was a baloney sandwich. And, and we give, we giving out money and stuff, and nothing is happening for the residents. Nothing whatsoever, even down to the flag. You just stood up and talked about these professional people that voted on this flag, that was on this, on this particular panel. But what it boiled down to, didn't nobody say that it was just a common citizen on the board. It's just whatever that this administration wanna pack down someone's throat. It make no sense, but I hope that you guys can get this stuff picked up.
Sylvester Hall, thirty-nine one, Rolling Hills Lane. You would think, being in the state of Florida, and how often we get hurricanes, we would have this down-packed by now. This would be like, you know, getting up, getting out of bed, taking a joy walk. To ride around the city of Apopka and see the response, it's kind of sad. No leadership, nobody out there directing, everybody on the news but Mayor Nelson. Saying where to go, where you need to be at, homeless, tell them to go to Orange County. So we are the city of Apopka. We know we get hurricanes every year. And I was out to the park the next day, walking around, looking at the, the workers doing their job. And I said, young man, do we have a chipper? Say, ah, we waiting on FEMA to come in. If you have a chipper, which is a mortar, you got four people, one team can do the work of four people, and can get so much done, so much more done efficiently. Where is our hurricane? It's just, it's just sad, it's just sad. We should, we should have the equipment set aside, ready to rock and roll every year. Ready to rock and roll, where we don't have to depend on nobody but the city of Apopka. So it's just, it's just sad to see the response to, it's sad to see, I went to Hope and just was there for one of their events after I got through cleaning up, doing my little civic duty in the community. And to see the outpour of love, people handing out things, I, I, I just helping people out. But I, you know, it, it's, it's like you didn't see anything from the city of Apopka, where it's showing that the community coming together and, and trying to help and get this thing done. And now you're riding around, you see trash everywhere, trash and debris everywhere. And you say, what are we waiting on? Well, we waiting on FEMA to come in and give us the money. This is unsafe and shouldn't happen, not in the city of Apopka. We're not some backward city that just came, came about. We've been around for a while, we're the second largest. Look, it's time for us to do better. It's time for us to do better, and that's by all the citizens of the city of Apopka, thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay, if not, uh.
You have someone coming up.
You do?
Well, I'm sure, yeah, thank you. I apologize for my height deficiencies. My name's Angelica Jones, two one seven zero, Wakava Village Lane, Apopka, Florida. Good evening. We are, we, and if you would raise your hand if you're part of Wakava Village, we are here today because we are a small town home community with about sixty units. And after Hurricane Milton, three of either city or county ponds caused significant water to encroach and saturate our roads, our sidewalks, our driveways, and our yards. On Friday, the water began to rise about an inch an hour. At this point today, on Thursday, the water's depth is rising about an inch a day and expanding out several inches in certain locations throughout our community. Today makes the seventh day that the water continues to rise and has been sitting on our street, threatening our homes. We have at least one street light that is threatening to fall on our properties. Six of our units have been without power since Friday, and we will not be granted access to electricity until the rising water subsides. The stagnant air in our homes presents an ideal environment for the growth of bacteria and fungi, such as mold. Again, there is no hope of water, of the water subsiding anytime soon, given the fact that it is still rising. While we understand that after the large amount of rainfall, there is a natural rise in the water, in, in the different bodies of water, officials have confirmed to us that our rising water problem is a result of pumping into the ponds in our community. The Commissioner today mentioned that there may be an option to plug something. I wish I can give you a better idea of what that meant, but we don't have a better idea of what that meant. But plugging something was going to maybe help resolve the rising water. Everybody who has been outside, out to our community to assess the problem, has simply stated, we don't know what to do, and nobody knows how to stop the rising water. If the water continues to rise, we risk the southwest side of our community, which is currently exposing erosion by its boundary, the, sorry, the southwest part of our community has a boundary that is, that is experiencing erosion. That your boundary completes its ero, uh, uh, if it erodes, the water will threaten to invade our homes. Our lift station is compromised, or takes on more water than the entire neighborhood could, can, uh, could have sewage in, sorry. Our lift station can rise, and if it takes on more water, the entire neighborhood will have sewage in our homes. It is important to note that this backup has started, they were able to stop it, but it already did threaten to occur. We are not talking about a potential issue, we are talking about a real issue, well, it is a potential issue, but it is more than just a future, maybe it will happen. It is a likely this is going to happen situation. Further, as many of you have probably seen in our community with the potholes and other damages to the concrete, constant submergence of concrete underwater heavily contributes to the integrity and deterioration of the concrete and road. If you recall, I told you that our sidewalks, our roads, and our driveways are all currently, well, several of ours, are currently undersitting water, which is rising. The continued suspension, I would ask for more time, I'm sorry.
I would like to hear.
I, thank you. The continued suspension of access to our electricity, which impacts our families and our workers. And for those of us who do not have other homes that we can go to, it's going to affect our bank accounts, because at this point, we will have to go to hotels because we don't have access to any electricity. Right now, as I said, there have been commissioners and mayors have gone out there to assess what is happening. We have spoken to the city of Apopka, we have spoken to Orange County, we have spoken to Seminole County. All of these people have something to do, all of these entities or counties or districts, municipalities, have something to do with what is happening in our neighborhood. Orange County stated today that it would provide an emergency, sorry, I have four questions that I'm gonna ask you all. Um, I don't know whether or not you have answers to them, but I would, I, I asked to be allowed to ask the four questions. Orange County has stated that it would provide an emergency proposal to address this issue to the city of Apopka today. Does anybody have a status on whether or not that emergency proposal was submitted?
Yes. Oh, I know, I know we got it, I, I don't know, it came in late this afternoon, so I don't, I don't know if it.
Okay.
I know, sent it over to, to Dio and the, and, and Richard, the, um, the berms, it's the, I guess the water berms or something. Anyway, so we, we, we'll, we'll address it in the morning, so.
Can we all get copies of that, though, too?
Can we all get copies of that though too?
Sure.
Please. Can't remember, I, I've got it on my phone.
My name is David Pudukpupis, or is but director. The email that came into us thi- this evening was a consideration from some contracting firm. To put what you call a berm, a, a water berms which we are researching around the pond. That is recommend, recommendation, right, in order to, you know, create more storage in the pond. Right, so, we just got that late this afternoon. We just, um, have to contact that company and see what that berm is, right? So, and if that would be something that would work. I can tell you this, that around the neighborhood here, within Seminole County, us and everybody says. All this groundwater table is a subject to what is happening in the Saint John River and the Wakava River. They are going to, from what the news that you're hearing, all those river are going to peak, I think tomorrow. And once they finish the peak, that's the highest that they can get, the water will recede. And, and everybody is suffering the same situation, right, if you live within a low line areas. There is no way in this situation that you can get the water to pump anywhere. Right, there is no pumping mechanism that you can pump this water anywhere. Right now, our lift station is right, what she said. A lot of this water went to our lift station, one point six million gallons of water went to our lift station as well there.
So we, anyway, we've got the email and so we'll, we're gonna take a look at that, you know, as of tomorrow. What's that? Well, let me, let me, let me, let me, go, go ahead and ask the four questions, some of them might be able to answer, but, but that, there's the first one, what's your second one?
Okay, um, so in addition to the proposal that was provided. What is, that came from the city of Orange County. What is, what efforts has the city of Apop- sorry, Orange County did that? What efforts has the city of Apopka put toward resolving this problem?
We, we're, right now, we're taking on about five hundred thousand gallons of stormwater going into our lift stations that we're now processing. So we're taking five hundred thousand gallons a day off of the, off of the, the, uh, the lake. So we're, we're reducing the amount of water going into the lake by five hundred thousand gallons a day.
Respectfully, while I understand that, you, you're saying that, but our water is, it, it's not, it's not reducing in our properties. So, we are not seeing any reduction, we're seeing an increase. The concern that you see for most of us right now is. There was, it has been confirmed that fixing the other problems was to push the water into our, and make it our problem.
No, I mean, you, so, let's start from the, the headwaters, which is Border Lake. So everything, Border Lake is the highest of the, of the lakes, okay? When Border Lake overflows, it goes either Lake Rudin, which is in front of Hobby Lobby, or it goes to Lake Cortez. So you gotta balance Lake Cortez, th- that one is it starts to rise, then you start to flood out homes in that neighborhood. So you got, you got water going that direction, you got, uh, Piedmont Lake, which, as you saw, was water coming across the, the, uh. The sidewalk going into the storm drain, which is then going downhill, which is your, your, towards your, yeah. Would, which would be west of, uh, Piedmont, Wakava Road. So, you're lower than the other areas and, and so naturally the water is gonna go to the lowest, lowest spot. The, 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 I mean, I've been out with Jeff Charles and, and Mike Drosick from, from Orange County. Probably six times in the last four or five days. And, you know, we're, we're managing the pond, you know, it's, it's always, it's full. It's full, then the ponds of, of, off of, uh, four thirty-six at the, at the hotels, they're full. The, the, uh, the Lake Cortez is at the, at the point where it's about to, to go into the, the. One of the, there's two houses that are the lowest, it's about to go in those two houses. But, I mean, I, I, you know, uh, the, the, the neighborhood next to you, the road, the, the road is full. So the water from that road, which is Wakava, is it Oaks? I think Wakava Oaks, the water is going from the road into the storm drain there as well. So, ev- everything, a lot of the, the excess water is coming from the storm drains that are, there's nowhere for them to go. If you look, Wakava Oaks, the same thing, it's, it's, it's completely saturated, the, the, uh, the storm drain there.
So, uh, what I'm understanding you say is this is a problem that you are trying to handle. But it is such a large problem, it's going to take time to handle. I can understand that, so my question next is. Um, I mean, I, I would hope that there would be some investigation into whether or not. It was truly just the water went to the lowest part, or did that water get helped in its direction it was pumping? I, I would ask that you all investigate that as opposed to simply assuming this is just a natural cause that has never happened before. And has happened today for, or rather with this hurricane for the first time, but here's my, my third question. We just heard a very nice presentation regarding all the money that's going to be allotted toward prepare hurricane preparedness. My question.
No, no, not repaired, preparedness, no, it's for, for fixing what's, what's.
Okay, so my question is, for those, for, as you know, there are six specific houses in our unit that is, that are heavily damaged. What is the city of Apopka going, while we're trying to figure out how to fix that, what is the city of Apopka going to do to help us? Who are without electric, who can't even drive, I cannot drive my car into my yard. I have to walk everything from halfway up the drive of the street all the way to my car. I am an attorney, I go to trial, all of my files, and if I, when I go to trial like yesterday, I have to carry all of my files across all of that. What kind of help can you guys give to us now while we are in the waiting period?
Not sure I've got an answer for you, I mean, we, we can, we, we're looking at those, the water, um, barriers. As a, as a way to, to stop the water from coming into the neighborhood. I mean, long term, we've got a solution with, uh, we've got some funding to do a, um, a piping. We, we have, uh, right now, we get water from, uh, reclaimed water from Utilities Inc. Which is Wakava area, and we also get it from, uh, Altamont Springs. And we've got a, we've got a right of way that, um, we, we can, we can use to, to, um. To bring excess water from those, the, the three lakes, which you got Border Lake, Piedmont Lake, and Lake Page, all three are, are flooding.
Are you saying that there are no resources or monetary aid that can be provided to us in the interim? While we are waiting for this problem to be fixed?
I, no, Dio, and while he's, he's coming down, the, um, I know that we are, we are, um, we got. Obviously, we got other neighborhoods in the, you know, kind of the same situation, but, um, the long term solution will be good. We do have, there is a drainage well, and, you know, y'all know what drainage well is, you might know what a, a drainage well is a, basically, uh. Um, a straw that goes from surface water down to the aquifer. That little church right there, uh, going south on Piedmont, Wakava. There's a drainage well there, it's, it's a, how, how big is that drainage well, Dio? Twenty, sixteen inches. So there is, there is a, there's sixteen inches of water going straight into the, from the surface of Lake. Um, Page into, into the, into the aquifer. So you're getting sixteen inches of water going straight into the, from the lake to lower that lake level. Going into the, uh, the aquifer, and what I've have, I've made sure, the county, and we've, we've been also checking to make sure that. You don't get things that clog that up, because, you know, sixteen inches is a lot, that's a lot of water that you can take off the, off the lakes, which will take. You know, water should start to receive the, the, all the lakes and ponds.
I just have a question before you start, because I spoke with the county today, and then Daniel did as well. His home is experiencing the most damage, and he has it in writing. The county representative is saying that the city pumped things into those county-owned ponds, which we've never had an issue with our retention pond ever. I mean, our homes are in jeopardy, we, I know other people have issues too, but we just want a timeline, is there a timeline? I know you just got the emergency proposal today, but this is like third world country living conditions. And if it was your yards and your families, you would be doing something about it.
And we have photos to confirm that.
Yep.
Things were after the hurricane, it wasn't because the water was throwing.
Correct.
The hurricane, it happened after the events.
But, but we cut, we cut, we cut the pumps off when, when they, the pu- when the, the pond got to a, a certain level.
But, so, did, did we pump into their ponds?
Yes, we, we, we've always done that, we've always done.
So it's gonna work, so we did.
We, we, we've done that before, it's the same pond we did three years ago.
But now it's getting into our properties, it's, it's hitting our, our properties, like. I have a house right now, I just got this house, oh, like, not even a month ago. And just finished closing, to now be opening my front doors. Guess I wanted water from property, because I can see fish right now outside my hu- my house flopping around into my backyard. It is four inches away from my patio. It is not, oh, it's like a couple feet away, it's right there. It is not, it does not look like it's stopping either, it's been rising for the past week.
A lady from the news came out today, and then Nikki's backyard, who's next door to him, she took one step, and she's a tall lady, her, her entire boot. Oh, someone's trying to save me, her entire boot was covered, I mean, th- this isn't normal, and it's still rising. We've been making marks, my husband made a, uh, I don't know, he's a smart guy, something to track the water. We were gaining an inch, we're still gaining about an inch a day, I mean, this is ridiculous, we understand that water rises, but we have to have answers. You know, and we've, we've tried to be respectful, and we wanna work together, let us know what we can do to help, but we have got to get this fixed.
So is there something we can do to, to at least try to, because it's in your back, in your backyard? Is it something we can do to at least try to move it away from their backyard, so they can, you know, move it to their driveway? Is there something we can do?
Backyard right now, you're gonna move it into my house.
Oh, okay, so.
We're trying to, we're trying to make sure, keep it away from everyone.
Everybody's house, yeah, what can we do to, you know?
My name is Paula Alexander, I live at twenty-two-ten Wakiva Village Lane. Um, I've lived there for, I don't know, about eight years, we've never had this problem before. All of this comes from the hobby over there near Hobby Lobby. And you guys, the city, or whoever maintains that pond. This pond has been an issue since before the last hurricane. It floods out the street, it gets pumped up, and this time it got pumped into our ponds, which then overflowed. That did not happen in the previous hurricane, which dumped much more rain than this one did. So I don't understand that logic. In addition to that, what they haven't even mentioned is that our lift station is on a generator. Because they had to turn off the electric at that end of the street. Because they were afraid the boxes, which there's about this much left, is some of the electric boxes, were gonna explode because they're submerged. Nobody's come out, they brought out, what, like ten sandbags one day, oh, thank you. That was hel- I mean, yeah, okay, that is a little bit helpful for one person's garage. But the fact that we even had to be here tonight about this, when it's been a week since the hurricane. Is ridiculous. Um, and we're, and we're, it feels like we're getting the runaround. And that's why we're here, is because we're not seeing, oh, well, here's another generator. So that the poop doesn't come back up into your house, that's, and, and ten sandbags, that's what we've gotten, that's it. And, oh, well, we got an email about possibly doing some berms that might do something, but we gotta read it. And see if that is even feasible, this is not acceptable a week after the hurricane. And like Amber said, if it was your house, if it was your, the end of your cul-de-sac that this was happening. I guarantee you it wouldn't take a week for action to be taken by the city council.
Sorry, I'm sorry, um, as far as the berms are concerned, we were told. That if they tried to handle the infrastructure of these ponds or to fix, because they're, at some, we know at least one of the ponds had a breach. We were told that if they tried to fix that, it would create a bigger problem for us. Because it, there's not, there's no space to do that, so I'm not understanding how putting burns.
They fixed the pond, that's the, the county pond, they fixed the pond.
But they can't do that while the flooding is there, my understanding is they have to wait until the flooding subsides.
They did, they fixed it.
They dug, they dug, they dug trenches to pour some more.
Correct.
So it's not fixed. Right.
Yeah, but, but, I, I get that, but it's, all the water is going into the, the, the low area. It's not going into your neighborhood directly, it's, it's just filling up that, the big, whatever you wanna call it, the marshland. What's that? No, it's, it's not going into your neighborhood directly, it's going into the, it's going into the, the, to the low area. I, I've been down there ten times, I.
I, I have video footage.
Okay.
With all due respect, I'm sorry, with all due respect, when you guys go out there, you guys.
Kimmy, I don't need you, I don't, no, I know, I don't, I don't need him, he, he.
I'm sorry.
Don't you live in our neighborhood?
Yeah, no. I know, I know, I'm. No, I wasn't, yeah, right, no, no.
So, I have noticed, I have noticed who is coming out there.
Sure.
And I have noticed that when people go out there, they spend a lot of time near this gentleman's house. Which makes sense, because the water's touching his house. Nobody, I am across the street from him, I am the other end unit. Nobody goes out there to see what is happening, and I have told my neighbors a couple of times, they're not paying attention to this side. If you had paid attention to that side. So one of the things, and you guys, and, not you guys, right, I, I don't mean to, to make it personal, I mean you guys in general, right? One of the problems that I've noticed is while you guys are watching that side, you're not seeing what's happening on my side. What's happening on my side is, on Friday and even Saturday morning. The pond next to me is our, is our private pond. That was not connected to the, to the rest of it. Late Saturday, uh, between Saturday and Sunday, they began to connect. As a result of that connection, all of that water now is coming to the side of my house. And it used to stop in front of my house, it is now growing, going further and further into the back of my house. And, which is fine if it stayed kind of with the narrow stream, and I know you guys can't see what's happening, and I have video footage of it. But, but if there's a narrow stream, it's how it started, and that narrow stream is now a deep stream. And it's coming closer and closer to my house, and the closer and closer. And so when we say that this is rising water and growing water, this is what I'm saying. So when they said, hey, we're gonna put, we're gonna put something over there to stop the water. It started pushing all of this water toward my house, which is my concern when you guys are saying, okay, well, the offer. The, the suggested plan is to put these burns in place. My question is, okay, are you gonna pay attention to how that's affecting my house? Or are you guys just gonna save that house and throw it out to my house and say you fixed the problem?
Albert McKemmy, three-six-zero-three Golden Gem Road. For me, the definition of insanity is to continue to do the same thing over and over again, and expect a different result. Berms are not the answer. Berms are fine for holding back water that's still. The minute you have running water, the running water acts like a water jet, it cuts the berms. So the minute the water overflows over the top of a berm, it's eroding the clay in the berm. And all you do is increase the size eventually, and that berm collapses. How do I know this? Because I've watched the city of Apopka build berms on two occasions, and watched, seen catastrophic events. First one was a Golden Gem Road, and that's what caused the sinkhole. They built a berm across the road to try and, uh, move water, it didn't work. Recently, we've had discussions about the infrastructure in this city. And I've said before, there was water being pumped around, and I've said it because I know for a fact, the city hasn't got the capacity to take the water. And I've said it because I know for a fact the city hasn't got the capacity to take the water. We have three-hundred-and-fifty-million gallons at Golden Gem Road that we can't use. What we just did two weeks ago is we built another berm on Golden Gem Road. We built a berm four foot high, clean, right across the face of where the sinkhole was. And guess what? Wasn't done properly because we paid seven-hundred-and-fifty thou- no, nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to build an interceptor trench. That interceptor trench was never built. You built a berm. The water came down that road over the, the period when we had rainwater. Not only has it destroyed all the work that they did, it's washed away the road. Running water will not stop, be stopped by a berm. All it'll happen, it'll erode and make it worse. So it's not a case of what we're gonna do here today. It's a case of what we're gonna do not only today, but in the future. We need to fix the critical infrastructure in, in the city of Apopka. And I've said that water was being transferred from one pond to another pond because you didn't have anywhere to keep it.
Hey, Dio, you wanted to come up? Or you wanna go?
Yes, sir. Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Charlene Gatlin, two-two-zero-six Wakava Village Lane. A resident of Wakava Village, uh, for three years now. So this has been my first time seeing the rise of water since I've been a homeowner in that community. And I understand my residents' concern as they are trying to figure out what is going on. So based on reports that I have seen, like, I'm actually maybe a good, maybe six to ten units away from if we do have additional breach from that getting into my homes. So my concern is, you know, not only for our residents who are currently without electricity, without, uh, access into their own homes and now risking a whole issue for, uh, a week, and I understand it. What is the solution? So based on an interview, which Commissioner Moore did come into the community, we saw news where she talked about the storage field. And the fact that, so there, there were several different problems that I even saw as a resident. One is that that lake over there by Hobby Lobby and the Chick-fil-A, even though it was breached with water filling into the street, the number one issue that you had was the fact that they had a fountain and the fountain was still running. So that's the, another issue that you guys need to address in regards to emergency preparedness for these types of issues. Why wasn't the fountain cut off? You know, to mitigate that particular issue from the start in regards to emergency prepared.
Gives you evaporation.
So there was also It doesn't evaporate when it's raining and still it was continuously flowing, even on the news station reports. As this issue was happening, it's still flooding into a state street, a state street. So that, there's quite a few issues that are kind of coming on in regards to this particular issue. One, they were talking about it being a state road. One, they were talking about the shopping center being a public, a private entity in regards to who is the owner of that particular pond or lake that's over there by Chick-fil-A and the Hobby Lobby Shopping Center. Okay, and then you have all the other existing, because you have Oasis Apartments that are over there by that, um, property as well, as well as the retention part that is over by our homes. So they have confirmed that there is a storage issue with one of the melees, which I assume is Border Lake that you've been refer- referring to for several, several times. We get that, we understand that. The issue is, is that the, the water that was being mitigated from that shopping center area has now moved into our neighborhoods with no fault of our own and wasn't a result of the storm initially. It started as a mitigation from the lake being pumped into our residence, which is now, our investments are in jeopardy. And we're trying to figure out how can the city, the, the city, the county, as well as if it, if, if it is the private owners, how can you all come together to help us mitigate this issue so it's not an issue in the future? So we, we know that it can't, uh, you know, there's futures. It'll take a lot of money to under- you know, get this fixed. They just did it with Orla Vista on the county state, who have been dealing with a flooding issue for years in regards to storms. This really shouldn't have been an issue after a whole week, considering the fact that it wasn't even initially storm-related. It was caused by pumping to reduce water off of a state road in a private commercial property that is now affecting your Apopka residents. So basically where we need to start right now is who, can we get the city? Can we get the county? Can we get, Seminole County was mentioned as well. Can we get these entities together to figure out how can we mitigate this problem right now? To help our residents before it becomes a investment part, uh, issue for the majority of us in the future.
Hi, Paul Lamb, one-twenty-two-fifty-five Wakava Village Lane. Uh, just let it be known that in May of twenty-three, we cleaned out our retention pond that we have for our neighborhood. And I went out there Thursday morning at seven AM. I looked at that retention pond. It had held the water from the brunt of the storm. I looked at the lake that was there and we poured a brand-new slab. Well, that wasn't brand-new. We repaired the slab at the, um, you've seen it, Mr. Mayor, at the end of our street. And we poured the slab with a footer. And that morning, on Thursday morning, the water had already only come up to that footer and it looked like it held. So let it be known that we did our best to hold the water that came from our neighborhood. Thank you.
Oh, it's not, we're not, uh, nobody's saying it's, it's, it's your fault. I mean, we're, it's, it's, you know, uh, let, let, let me have Dio our, our.
Sorry, I just wanna say, I appreciate that you all listened to what we had to say and to our concerns. I understa- we are obviously in the midst of it, and so we are all quite emotional because we're tired of it. And I appreciate that you all listened. My hope is that in addition to listening, action will be taken. That it won't end here. I, but I do wanna say thank you for being patient with us and for listening to what we had to say and for extending our time to present to you today. Thank you.
Dio, you wanna just give a few?
I, I am very sympathetic with each one of you, and I hope that you don't misinterpret what I'm saying here. Right? I just want to, to speak to you as an engineer, if there were a solution to the problem right now, that not transporting the wa- the floodwater somewhere else, we, we, we would have already instituted. So please understand. I just wanted a question that was asked here and I noted that, and that's the reason why I came up here. There is public assistance available. So if your house is being threatened, you have the insurance, but also there is, you can go online on the website. FEMA has a site open here for Right, but they will be coming out and investigate as well, because that is a public assistance. So I just want you to know that there's a public assistance. The website is open. You can go there, put your name, your address, everything else. They will give you the shortcut.
I think they're aware of those resources.
Right, I just want, what, what we can do, right? The, the, the long term, there's no short term, what's, well, solution there. What is happening there, the water is coming from the groundwater table. What you have seen, and you're correct, that yes, the city had placed a pump there. And for the past, I think, three days or four days that we have pumped because that was in agreement with the Orange County. DOT and our pump, because we were trying to help. Right, and they gave us the authorization to pump in the, in, in that pond. We stopped pump there, I think, was on Thursday or Friday. Right, on Friday, right, because the whole sheet was flooded. So you were right that, yes.
Right. We never, we never said we weren't pumping. But this, this is the sa- is the exact same thing. All three pumps were going u- under Hurricane Irma. We haven't changed one thing that we've done, nor has, has DOT done anything different, nor has Orange County done anything different than we did three years ago.
Right, this happened, this happened in Hurricane Eon, the same, the same thing Hurricane Eon.
Yeah.
Um, if I read the letter to states, right. What is happening here is not really a surface water issue. It is a groundwater issue. So the rise, yes, we did pump some surface water there. There's, there, there's no question that the pump was there and, and some water went to the dry retention pond, right? But the question there right now is a groundwater table problem. The groundwater is rising. And, uh, what you, what all of us need to understand, this is something natural. Until the Wak- uh, the, the St. John River is going down, until the Wakava, everything is, is interconnected. But it's a natural situation. There's nothing that we can do to control the groundwater, so.
Let me give you one, uh, another example. So we got Lake Street, which, um, was flooding, but it's not bad enough to, to make a, a difference in the houses. But water's going right through the, the, the berm there on Lake Street, and we're having to pump. There, we're able to pump water out of the, out of the, uh, the roadways and into a storm drain. It goes into Dream Lake, which then ultimately gets to, um, like I'm on Sandpiper. I mean, and then gets over into Lake Bravat. So we've got a solution for, for Lake Street, the flooding there.
Yep, but the solution there for, for all the flooding around that area is a long-term solution. It's not something that we can come overnight and, 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 and come there and fix. I can tell you what is happening in the long term, what's, what, what, what solution. I'm not saying, no, 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 I didn't say that. I said the, the what you read in the newspaper, that the river will be peaking tomorrow. Tomorrow you read the high stage and then it will recede. We are going to see some improvement. This, this is what you read in the newspaper. You hear what the water management is saying. This is what I'm, all the flood river, the receiving water body is at high state. I just want.
So Dio, do you know how much, what does a sixteen-inch well do a day? Do you have any idea?
No.
We can, so, so let me find out what the calculation is on that sixteen inch. We've got, we've got two drainage wells. Um, and, and just so you, we'll go back three years or two years. So after the, after Irma, one of the things Orange County did, they brought in some, some, uh, ground penetrating radar to look. There was a third drainage well, which is right at the corner of Piedmont-Wakava Road and four thirty-six. When they, when they added the additional lanes, when DOT put the additional lanes in there at four thirty-six, they covered up the drainage well. So there's a drainage well that, that was a s- we don't know, I don't even know how big, sixteen inches or whatever. You cannot, you cannot put any more drainage wells down, uh, it's for the DEP reasons because they don't want bad quality water getting into our aquifer. So we tried to find this, the existing drainage well so that we could reopen that. That would have been the cheapest solution to that, that whole area. Well, they're, they're a part of the problem, but, I mean, we all are. I mean. Well, they're, they're four thirty-six. Four thirty-six is their road. So any excess water coming off four thirty-six is their problem. I mean, so. Right. You, you, you don't need to, I mean, we, we can do that. I mean, it's, we're, we're in contact. We're, we're in contact with, you know, Orange County. Seminole County, we haven't gotten engaged a lot yet. Um, when we get to the, the, the final fix, we'll, we'll ask them for their, their, their contribution. As I recall, it's, it's like five percent Seminole County, ten or fifteen percent, Richard, in here. What, what was the member, when it's like fif- ten to fifteen percent was DOT and then the, the balance was about even between Orange County and Apopka? So, so it's say it's forty, forty, fifteen and five. The, the, the basin that we, we need to take excess water off. Yes. No, this is, this is just based on land area. This has nothing to do with, it's just state, it is land area.
Paul Alexander again, twenty-two-ten Wakava Village Lane. Um, so one thing that I did, I touched on previously but wanted to bring up is a lot of this seems to stem from that pond at that Hobby Lobby corner. You can shake your head no, but we saw the water being pumped out from over there because it floods the street. It does it every time there's a storm. My bigger concern is that it's been about to crest since three weeks ago and nothing was done. And they had to pump out there for a couple of days, but this is an ongoing problem. Ever since they added that daycare center into that parking lot, there have been increased problems with flooding of, um, uh, the road there consistently. And a hurricane, it's not a tornado. We knew it was coming. Why are we not taking mitigating steps prior to the hurricane to lower those water levels so that the road doesn't get flooded out, so that we're not all driving through a parking lot that now has holes the size of sinkholes in it so we can get to work and pump the water into places it shouldn't be going in the first place? So I think we need to look at this as a bigger picture, and if that is a privately-owned pond, then those people need to take care of it, and the city needs to enforce that and find them and make them pay for all of these things that are a result of their bad planning of the drainage of that pond. Because I, Chick, and God knows, you know, this, this Florida Chick-fil-A had to close down the drive-through for three days. I'm surprised they didn't help because of that. But that pond is the source of a lot of this problem. You can shake your head all you want.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that, that pond is, is peanuts compared to the big problem. Big, I mean, if, if you filled up that, the, the wetland behind your, your property, that's a hundred times as large as that pond in front of Hobby Lobby. So it, I understand, I mean, you look, but if Border Lake is, is, it starts to problem, it starts to cascade, it just takes the Hobby Lobby pond with it and all the, you know, Lake Pleasant, how much water has gone into the storm drain from Lake Pleasant coming your way? Yeah, right.
That, even before a leak, that water was beyond what it was supposed to be. Everybody could have driven down that road and known that wetland was gonna create our pond or whatever you wanna call it, was going to create a massive issue if you have a lot of rain. And so when we say, why wasn't, why weren't things mitigated? Because even if another body of water is pouring into there, had that been mitigated, it's gonna have taken on more water and we don't know, right? It's all speculation. What's gonna happen and they did it. But it's speculation because they didn't do it. If they did do it, we wouldn't know. So are we leaving here the same way we came? It's just waiting to see? Is there a commitment to doing something that you all are willing to do?
It's just, it's just the, the water berm. That's, that's, that's their proposal. That's it. I mean.
But you also mentioned. Excuse me, Mayor, did you also, did you also?
I, I will, I will tell you this, that when I turned on channel nine last night, that was the first time that I learned about your community. I had no information. It was Right, Commissioner Moore was the one. This.
I'm just hearing about this right now.
Right, today.
I, I've been out there, so I, I saw the electrical boxes that was under the water and the bench, I guess, normally you sit on the bench and look over the lake. That was also underwater.
So can I ask Commissioner Smith, how did he, how did you know about that?
How did I know about it? Because Commissioner Moore sent me an email and told me I need to go and take a look.
Right, so she, she actually called me, because last night, Channel Nine, when I turned on the, the news, okay, Channel Nine, when I turned on the news last night, which was at ten o'clock, I was surprised to learn about your community. I'm recognizing all your faces because you got interviewed last night. Early this morning at seven o'clock, I called Commissioner Moore, and she then gave me all the information. Of course, we had to come in today for this meeting, but I had actually sent an email to our chief administrator, um, early this morning, and I asked him, can he please give me an update about the flooding around the city of Apopka? Because we were getting certain emails, at the interview last night, you said that you had contacted the city, and I was wondering, who did you contact, because I went through all my emails, it was not me. Right, because I, I've had, I've had other, uh, communities contact me, but I looked and I said, I didn't hear anything about Wakayama Village. But I actually learned all about you through Channel Nine, and then Commissioner Moore followed up this morning, and she actually sent me an email. But I did ask our city, um, administrator for an update, which, you know, um, my understanding was that today, at the mayor's report, that the mayor would give us all an update. But prior to, to you being present tonight, we were not aware of what was going on.
So I think what's important is, is there a solution? And I think, so Mayor, the question is, is you mentioned a drainage well, so there's no.
There, there's not a short-term solution.
So there's no short-term solution.
We, we can, we, we, some things we can do, we, like, we, we have to make sure that that, the drainage well is open and, and, and functioning, that we keep all the water going in there we can, need to make sure that the berm, you know, we could add another, you know, the county could add another foot onto the, to the, the, the berm on your side of the pond, which would give you a little more, I mean, but you're, you're talking, I don't know, twenty thousand gallons, you're not talking, I mean, what you've got in that, in that, that depression behind you is, is millions and millions and millions, you're not talking, that's what I'm saying, folks, the, the Hobby Lobby pond is this big, the, the pond that Orange County has is this big, and the pond or the, or the, the wetland behind you is this big. And so it, it, you could take all the water out of Hobby Lobby and it's, it's gonna make a, a one-inch difference in your neighborhood. I mean, if you dried it all the way out. Yeah, yes, yes, correct. Right, right. I understand, that's exactly right, yes, yeah, go ahead.
Dorian Hernandez, two-one-nine-one, Wakayama Village. I'm an engineer, not exactly water, I'm electrical, but actually working, working for a water utility now. So my, there's a question, we have a question for one of the folks that we hear, it's like, what can be done in order to seal the breach that we have right now? If possible, I think, uh, what really has a lot of people concerned, including me, because actually I'm the fourth house from the house that actually is getting water on the wall. Is that you, you continue hearing the, the noise of the stream going over, and then eventually it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna do what is, that we're trying to avoid. Um, so is there something that can be done right now? Maybe just throw stuff, you know, at the wall and see what, what can be done, and then if something works, great, that'll pieces. If, if it's adding more dirt or making that side of, of the, the pond where we are at, right? You don't know, uh, reinforce it, great, at least we'll, these folks are gonna see that something is being done. Because sometimes in emergencies, and I mean in emergencies, so hurricanes, utilities and all this stuff, sometimes you just gotta throw whatever it helps at the moment, and then deal with it later. Which brings me into what, I know that you have an engineer here, obviously much, many years experienced than me or anything like that, but so it's October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, this is gonna happen again, it could be worse. And then we're gonna go back, thanks to the, to, to record-keeping and all this stuff and videos, like, okay, we talked about this, something was gonna be done, you know, how long it takes, I know it takes a long time to implement changes in utilities, especially water, it's not easy. But we gotta look at, how can we avoid this, how can we avoid being here again? And the other part is about the money, I know that the state and federal probably could help, the entities that gotta get involved. But then, you know, I see so much, uh, permits and stuff like that for building, and, um, how are these, maybe it's already integrated into these permits and all this thing, but how are they gonna be able to help mitigate this in the future? Because it's going to happen again, uh, Ian was in twenty twenty-two, a lot of water, never, never pressed it to the, to this point. Now, I know that it was raining like two days before the hurricane, and there were, at least I saw two pumps at each side of, uh, four thirty-six. Because I saw the, the pumps already high, I said, this is gonna, this is gonna be worse than Ian, I just couldn't see it, and it happened. Uh, I understand, you gotta pump the water somewhere, otherwise it's, I don't know if actually having more localized flooding of specific sites better than having everything come together, but then again, I'm not a, you know, that kind of engineer that designs this kind of stuff. But, um, it's gonna happen again, so hopefully in the future, when this, we, they wanna do changes and things like that, um, just, we don't wanna be here again doing, doing this, um, otherwise, not live in Apopka, live somewhere else if this doesn't happen. Unfortunately, that's what I was thinking, but thank you for your time. Um, and we understand, actually I like the way you have some, some engineering aspect that you're talking about, you're not wrong, obvi- obviously. But what we want to be able to do is like, what, you know, what can we do right now? Just throw anything that we can in there, if it's possible, not, I, so we know that action is being done and, uh, that it doesn't happen again. Appreciate it, thank you.
Can we use any kind of, uh, pumps to take some of that water?
I think he's gonna look and see, so just kind of sum it up, so you're gonna look and see if there's any type of drainage well that's open, that's one of the.
Well, we just gotta make sure that we, you know, because when you got that much water flowing into a drainage well, the last thing, like, matter of fact, they had some turtles that got stuck on the fence around it, and so it slowed the water going into, they had, killed the turtles die, they couldn't get off, I mean, the suction was that hard. So we had, they, I've had the county, this is county drainage well. And so they've, they've been, I've, I've asked them every day to go out and make sure they clean the drainage well, so you don't get like debris in the mouth of it, so you can maximize the amount of water going into the ground. So that's, that's the, 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 the best way for us to get the most amount of water the fastest, is make sure those drainage wells are, are operating as efficiently as possible.
So that's.
You know, we gotta check it once or twice a day, um, and I know the county, I, you know, they, they, they've been pretty good about that, so we just gotta keep, make sure they keep. Yes, but, I, no, I know that, that, but that's, that's, what is, what is our truck hold, Richard? Five hundred gallons? So five hundred gallons, it, it, it even, not even a, it, it's not even a, a rounding error. You see what I'm saying, you're talking, you look at this, you're not, yeah, it's not even, it's like a bathtub to the ocean, and so it's, it, I, I understand. I, I understand, I mean, I, if you want me to go put a back truck out there once a day, I'll go put a back truck out there. No, no, it's not. It, it, it's, we've got other, we've got other areas that are worse than, than we've never, like Lake Street, we've never had that problem. I, I, I agree. We, we quit when it got high enough in the pond. Yeah, yeah, right, we did. I understand, so, okay. Yes, flood insurance.
So not, if, if that water actually penetrates our homes.
Right.
So this is an added issue here, and again, being told, you don't know what to do, just doesn't work.
So, 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 so is it possible to take these temporary berms and take them down to the end of that cul-de-sac? And at least stop the water from, from continuing to flow up into that neighborhood?
We'll, we'll find out, we'll get, we'll, we'll have an answer in the morning. Correct, on the other side. That's, that's the county.
We can't spare for that?
No. I know. Okay, all right, so we, we will get, do y'all have, if you wanna give us some emails?
Well, I think we're, I mean, that, obviously the frustration here, I just wanna say this is, it feels like you guys are getting pushed off again. Failed infrastructure, obviously, and one of the things I think may help for right now at least, is let's get you as many sandbags as we can, just to protect in the short term, some stuff, I know that's not a big thing, but it helps with the berm as well, to just stop some of this and save homes as much as possible, let's start there, I guess. And then start working our way back from there, is that, I mean, it's not the perfect fix by any means, but it's something to start protecting your homes. Because I want, and I pulled up while you guys were speaking, again, learning about this, you guys' flood zone, and you're not in one, so that's even more problematic of that, to your point, that this is man-made in some capacity, they're failing, or, um, i- it's not natural. So, uh, I think if we can get hundreds and hundreds of sandbags to that neighborhood tomorrow, we, we were able to give out forty thousand, something more than that last week and three days, so I think we can do that, I'm happy to help out filling those and getting them there, because that, it's just something to stop the water getting into your homes, stop your front door, things like that, slow it down somehow.
So those are three solutions.
I wanna buy a little time for us to fix the long-term issue, that's, that's what I need right now.
So it sounds like we have three, three solutions on the table, at least something, okay, okay.
All right, so if, if we have a, somewhere you guys can sign in with an email address, we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you a, uh, an email out tomorrow before lunchtime. So, uh, is there anything over there, Jacob, you, or Susan, you got? If you got, oh. Can you just, what, if, let me put a, um, yeah, Blanche, take a sheet over there. And if you, very legible on your email addresses, because some people, so if everybody would just do that for me, that, that would be great. We'll, we'll get you an answer, we'll get something out to you before lunchtime tomorrow, okay?
We definitely.
All right, thank, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Oh, absolutely.
Sorry.
That's not easy.
Okay, um, back to the amending the budget, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh one. Any, any other questions for Blanche? If not, look for motion to.
I have one question that I wrote down before and started that, how much money do we get from Ian, from FEMA reimbursement?
I wanna say around one point three.
Is that, was that similar to what we had spent?
Very close.
Okay.
It, it was very, very close, it was a little bit.
Thank you.
All right, looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh one.
So move.
Now, motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Smith, all is in favor.
Thank you.
Oh, two-minute break.
All right, City Commissioner reports, Commissioner Nesta, you want to get us started? Okay, we're we're ready to go. Okay, Commissioner Nesta, you want to get started?
Oh, okay, okay.
Bye-bye.
Okay. First off, I just want to thank uh our first responders and our staff for what they did for our community last week in preparation for the hurricanes. Yes, there's always opportunities to do better and and I just appreciate our staff that were here to be able to um step up for us and and help. Um, I know there's a lot of cleanup efforts still continue to happen in in organizing that, so I appreciate that happening. Um, I was handing out, I want to say we were something like forty thousand bags, sandbags last week, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less, but it was fun to be able to hand out. I think I filled something like a thousand, twelve hundred bags myself, so it was, it was quite an effort and and I think uh an opportunity for us too is to make sure that we have enough staff out there to help elderly or people in need. Um, disabled vets, whatever it may be, always have, so that's not a set time, but there's always somebody that can assist those in need out there, because it was. We had a great system, I'll say that, i- it was getting people in and out, which is incredible, but having s- dedicated staff there to help residents that are in need. Um, which is why I showed up to help, to to help wherever I could on that. So I just want to say again, thank you to our first responders and staff, they they did the absolute best they could possibly do, and I appreciate that um throughout that effort. Uh, for the CIP plan tomorrow, or uh, yeah, the the workshop, on the minutes that we approved, it said six P M, and I'm seeing that it's five thirty P M. Now, and I wasn't updated on that at all, and it was on my calendars, and I've adjusted my schedule for six P M. Who changed that?
I'm not sure, I I don't know. I'd have to check that, I could give you an answer.
Okay.
So six o'clock?
That's what we all agreed to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was it posted? Was it posted five, was it posted at five thirty?
It's posted at five thirty.
Yes.
Or five thirty it is.
But the minute says six? I'm I'm just asking.
I'm telling you the minute says six.
No, it it did, I thought it was at six myself, just sort of, but then I saw it was at five thirty, so I didn't know, I don't know how it changed.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, so what, which one is it? What are we gonna do?
So are we?
If we got a, you do what was posted.
Okay.
Do what's posted, okay.
Five thirty.
Okay. So five thirty.
So I guess, what happens when there's a motion made and accepted and it's not followed? The motion was made for specifically six P M, and then it was unanimously changed in some capacity to five thirty without any notice to the rest of the council.
It's a hard question to answer because there's no um Roberts rules police. You know, if y'all make motions to do certain things, the idea is that you would generally do them, and if somehow that ha- doesn't happen, it falls through the cracks. Which, by the way, has happened on any number of issues I could name here, um, and other places. You just have to roll with it because there's no police, there's no police of Roberts rules, there's just not.
So, we can vote on something, it doesn't get followed through, and I have no recourse of that.
Well, it depends on what kind of thing it is. So, for example, if there was an ordinance passed or a resolution that required certain conduct, that and the failure to do it, whether it's by the body or whether it's by individuals, would be a violation of law. And in that regard, for any violation of law, there's a recall available to the citizenry, not to you guys, but to the citizenry. So if you say, is there any recourse, there is recourse, but if it's a procedural matter, like the time of a meeting, for example, no, there's no recourse except, well, we didn't get it right, so we're gonna have to do it over again and reset it, or something of that nature, unless you want to do what is I'm suggesting, which is, okay, well, you advertise five thirty, start it at five thirty, if you want to hold off on the business and do something else for thirty minutes, so it makes the six, then you can do that as a way to remedy it. But if you mean, is there something that's retribution of a sort or whatever, the answer is no, there's not.
Okay. So what's?
You do want to, or if you've got something until six, we can just sit here thirty minutes and we'll, if anybody comes, we can.
Yeah, I mean, I want our residents to know too, that's what we agreed to, and I want, if there's residents that want to provide input and they know that it was six P M, then that's what we need to stick to. So I'm okay to start the meeting at five thirty, but we actually start it at six.
All right, you got it.
I think it's appropriate for our residents.
But we're not, we're gonna sit here until six? Yep, yep, that's fine.
And be, I mean, clearly with all that is happening, I mean, residents that, so many residents spoke about infrastructure issues and and failing infrastructure, and a lot of it is due to our, the plans or lack of planning, do we have a new infrastructure plan in place that we're gonna start implementing, or is there, are we just kind of gonna be reactive moving forward? This is an open question to administration, to mayor.
I don't know what that means, what what do you, what do you ask?
Do we have a plan overall to fix the ongoing issues of flooding, of uh streets that are failing, sidewalks that are failing, or just dead end into nothing? Our failed ponds, because Martin Street is another one that we have, Martin Street and I think it's Lake.
Yes.
We have a failed pond there, so do we have any plans for this? Because I get calls, I get uh when I'm out, and the community, people are asking, and I don't have an answer.
Well, we're working on Lake, we we all look at Lake Street, that's the first time that's ever happened, so I, you know, that that was a new, new one on us. And so was the the pond off of uh Old Dixie, same, same issue, we don't, we hadn't seen that before, so, no, we 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 were not proactive, but we'd never seen it, so I guess, you know, for the last fifty years, it's not been a problem, but this this last week it was, so we will we will address it as we, as we, you know, as we go forward, we got, you know, we you know, we we can only do certain things, you know, roadways, we've got, we've got money to, we've got a lot of money for sidewalks, a lot of money for uh for streets, for for fixing streets, so.
But these failed ponds, I guess now, and again, to your point, I didn't, i- it's, it these are big deals, obviously, because they're failing and they're costing our homeowners money, they're costing us more additional money to budget for this, I mean, it's emergency preparedness, which many residents spoke about, so we need to get ahead of this, and your administration is in charge of creating plans like that, I'm happy to do it, I can do it and will do it if you won't take the charge on that. Happy to do it.
Okay, anything else?
That'll do it, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, and and like I said earlier, I did go out to um LeCava Village and take a look, uh and um they do need some help, and so I'm hoping that tomorrow that part of works can uh go out and and do something to help them alleviate the problem of flooding. Uh, and I also drove through the uh Oasis that's next door to them, and uh and it appears that that burn, it looks like they repaired, I guess, recently. The the water's still seeping over into their parking lot, and and all the drains and their roadways are also full and at capacity as well. Uh, so, so we need to do something there. I attended the uh Hope Community Center, they had an activity uh last week after the hurricane, probably about two thousand people. Yes, was there in attendance, very, very well, our planned event, a lot of vendors, and they gave out a lot of information and and well well attended, so that was great as well. Uh, and then at the Heart and Soul Festival, we presented, Ms. Lisa Williams, that's the founder and C E O for Lanes Girls. Uh, presented her with the Heart and Soul Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Servant Award, so all I have.
Well deserved, she is, she is a sweetheart, yep, yep. Commissioner Blaskas?
You did touch on, you know, some of the issues that um I was going to talk about, it it was the flooding issue. Uh, I just want to say the same thing as as Commissioner Nesta said, and that's to thank our first responders and um between the police and the fire department. And also, I appreciated that before the hurricane, that we did get some emails with you know, how the teams were gonna work, who was on the emergency uh emergency teams and contacts, so I appreciated that you did forward that to us. Um, also, our chief administrator, he sort of kept us informed all before this, the uh the storm, unfortunately, from tonight, I realized that after the storm, we didn't get too many updates and um, obviously, I had to turn on the television last night to find out about Wakava Village and all their issues that they were having. So again, I I just hope that we can do something to kind of mitigate um their homes within the next two days, because obviously um, there's a threat of flooding going into their homes, and that that's something that uh we need to address, I I feel like, within the next two days for them. And um, that's basically it, I mean, um, I did get an email, I do want to address that, because Mr. Sylvester Hall is here. And uh, the email was regarding public comment, and he's asking, and the, the email was addressed to directly to the mayor. Uh, and it was regarding asking to bring the public comment back following presentations, and I did respond to him, and basically told him that it was really, at this, at this point, would be the consideration of the mayor. Because uh, we've brought it as a motion here twice, and twice it has failed. So, uh, I don't know if the mayor has addressed the email, but I did address it, and uh, so it's it's back on the, on the mayor to make that decision, because he made the decision first time around.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, so I also want to echo um the council, I wanted to thank uh first responders, uh, I know the Apopka uh Fire Department received more calls than they ever received. And um, from my understanding, they did an amazing job, so thank you all, also the Popo Police Department. Um, we understand, at least I definitely understand, that there's always challenges after a hurricane, and we see the work you guys are doing, we think you guys are doing an amazing job. Um, things happen that are out of your control, and um, we are here to support you, and I want you guys to know, you guys are doing an amazing job. Um, I've been through different areas, um, Apopka is not, I mean, you guys have done an amazing job, I've been to areas where you still can't get down the streets, limbs are still in the road, so I want you guys to know that we support you all, and is there anything that we can do um as a council to assist um with any type of resources, any type of research, we're here to support. And um, we know that it's a challenging, you know, job after hurricane, because you have so many demands for the citizens, but we are here to support you all, and just know that we see the work you guys are doing, we appreciate the work you guys are doing. Um, in addition to that, um, I've been receiving a lot of different calls, and uh, I've been visiting residents and helping them, you know, apply for FEMA. Um, my office hours, um, I'll put on my um, on the um, on my Facebook page, um, anyone that needs assistance with filling out any type of FEMA um documents and stuff, please, please do not hesitate during my office hours to stop by, um, if you can't make it during my office hours, please just email me or call me, I will definitely assist, um. We are in this together, um, unfortunately, we cannot predict, you know, mother nature and kind of what happens. Um, there are some things that we can do better, um, but I think having these conversations and understanding that we all in this together, I think is important, and um to the residents um that are still suffering and that needs assistance, just please make sure to reach out to us, because I'm pretty sure everyone up here, um, you know, definitely, definitely um share the same um concerns and definitely want to make sure that everyone's safe, so, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Birthday boy, what have you got for us?
Oh, happy birthday.
God bless social security is all I gotta say, I have no report, thank you.
Jacob? Nothing, okay. All right, uh, real quick, I'm just, um, obviously, we got the the workshop tomorrow, uh, we'll be here five thirty, we'll start promptly at six. Uh, I know that y'all, y'all meant to include public services and facilities as far as uh who's out there on the front line, working hard to get us back, back to to square one, so obviously, first responders, good job, great job, but also our public services team, you know, they were out before the storm preparing and after the storm uh mopping up and and getting ready for the uh, you know, the the rebuilding and whatnot, what what else, what else needs to be done. The one last, I do want to say that um we've had a little bit of a, of a, an issue with our our debris removal company. Uh, don't go into a lot of detail, but anyway, they were supposed to have started tomorrow, um, there's some unforeseen circumstances, they are gonna start on Monday, so we won't start uh picking up the debris. But just make sure everybody that's out there, if you're putting um debris, it can only be trees, tree limbs, it can't be plywood or anything other than tree limbs and whatnot, and so they'll be starting on Monday, and um, we're hoping, I mean, should be no more than sixty days, we're hoping in less than thirty days, we'll have everything picked up and and our facility on at Northwest is still open for anybody wants to bring any debris, it will be um until we kind of slow it down to a trickle, so if you got debris you want to bring out, come off the empty lane to get to that facility. Last, but you know, not least, for good news, um, Saturday Sound starts on Saturday, so come on out to the amphitheater, starts at five, five to seven. Uh, bring a cooler if you'd like, a lawn chair if you'd like, and maybe a good, good way to relax after the, after the storm.
And uh, do they need to separate trash bags from the tree limbs?
Gosh.
S- some of our residents, they've been raking up the uh, the leaves and all that stuff and put it in trash bags, do the trash bag need to be separated from where they have the branches?
We'll we'll ultimately get it all, um, so our sanitation team is going around trying to get a limited number of bags and cans and furniture and that type of thing, like we normally would. like we normally would. And so after a couple passes, we'll, we'll have all that called up. But for the debris haulers, and for our initial efforts to get the big, the bulk of the debris, we want to try to keep it separated. So, we'll be focusing, uh, our trucks on the weekends, and then the hauler throughout the week will be focusing on the big piles of, of cleaning debris. Thank, thank you, Josh. Okay. All right, on to public comment.